Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing for the 25, 26 proposed operating budget, the 25 through 27 proposed biennial capital budget, and the 25, 26 proposed fees and charges. We are going to call this public hearing to order. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Camay.
Here.
Campos.
Present.
Salas. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candellis.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Welcome to your city hall. We're very happy to have you all here. This is our annual hearing on the budget. The council will vote on the budget itself and many related policy components tomorrow. Tonight, the council will not be discussing any of the items or voting. We are here to hear from you. And I've had that opportunity going out now and doing over a dozen community town halls, at least one in every district in the city, having heard from hundreds, probably well over a thousand residents at this point, not to mention all the email you've sent us. But we really appreciate your engagement. This is your opportunity to express your priorities, your values, what you hope the council thinks about as we vote on the budget tomorrow and continue doing policy work well beyond that. For large meetings like this, a few housekeeping items that I always like to reiterate. Number one, we have over 200 comment cards. By the time the night is over, it may be over 300. So we are going to have public comment be one minute, 60 seconds per person. We have a few other ground rules. It is very important that people do not disrupt the meeting. This is each individual's opportunity to exercise your First Amendment rights. No cheering, no booing. I know folks have signs. You're allowed to have signs, but do not hold them up and block the person behind you because that negatively impacts their ability to pay, to watch the screen and to participate. We ask everyone to be respectful. If you want to show your support for someone, the easiest, most efficient way to do it, so the next person can hear our clerk call their name for their one minute of public comment, is to just use your jazz hands to show them as they're walking back up that you like what they had to say. That's typically what folks do. We appreciate it. If people are shouting out and disrupting the meeting, we will stop the meeting and remove people from the chamber because it's not fair to everyone else and it just prolongs the public hearing. We're here to listen to each member of the public who showed up tonight for their allotted time when they have the floor. And in the rest of the time, the clerk needs to be able to let people know when their opportunity is coming up. So she's going to be mostly managing the meeting, but I will intervene if I have to. I think that more or less covers it. I do also just want to thank our city manager, Jennifer McGuire, Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox, City Manager's Budget Director Jim Shannon and his entire team. They have worked tirelessly over the last many, many months to get us to this point of having a detailed balanced budget with, we received two large binders where it shows every single dollar goes, every performance measure. It's a very complicated and detailed document and an important process, and they do a great job. I also want to thank my budget director, Stephen Keynes, and Smita Bhattacharya and Keith Hertzberg on his team for working so closely with our city manager and her team. With that, I think we are ready to jump in. So Tony, I'm going to let you give any additional ground rules. Also, if you would tell people about translation, language translation, I'd appreciate it, and then we'll get started. Thank you all again for being here.
Good afternoon. What I'm going to do is I'll call names in sets of about five, and I'll just keep an eye out and continue to add names. We have artificial intelligence interpretation available on the screen. Our speaker slide will also have a QR code if you wish to use your device to choose a language other than Spanish and Vietnamese, or if you have headphones and want to hear an audio interpretation via your device. When you come up to speak, you'll have one minute. You can speak in any language you're comfortable with, and we will translate that for you. And I apologize when I cut you off. It's not personal. You get a minute, and the mic will mute at a minute. When I call your name, you don't have to come down in the same order. First person to microphone, go ahead and start. So I'm going to go ahead and start calling names. First person to microphone, and then line up in the aisle behind that person. Anil Babar, Steve Navarro, Suzanne Rice, Deborah St. Julian, and Amoris Solomonov. Please come on down.
Thank you, Tony. And just before our first speaker, I did neglect to mention one other thing. This is a hearing on the proposed budget. We would ask people to stay on topic. This is about city business and the proposed budget, and so we will ask people to stay on issues related to the city's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, good evening. My name is Anil Babar, and I'm a resident of District Six. I'm here to show my support for the mayor's June budget message, because of its focus on greater accountability. I'd also like to thank Vice Mayor Foley for her support of this message. I support this message for many reasons, but in particular for what it does to invest in additional solutions to homelessness. Creating shelter, additional shelter opportunities will get everyone indoors. We need to stay on this path until the crisis is over. With over a thousand shelter beds opening this year, progress is being made, and now is not the time to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Steve Navarro. I'm a resident of District Seven. I'm also part of the District Seven Leadership Group, and I'm also a board member of our local neighborhood association. I'm here to express my support for the mayor's budget message, but I'm balancing that with some cautionary messages to the council and to the mayor. One thing I really ask you to be mindful of is the unintended consequences of moving with speed and urgency. I do ask you to take into account the impact of what you do, the changes that you make, and make sure that you include the community, not just roll over us. We are interested in supporting and helping to make for a better city, but we also sometimes feel like what we're getting is being crammed down our throats, you know, and the urgency of trying to solve problems. You know, please don't create more of that by just throwing it right in our face. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Leif Branson and Charlie Worm to come on down. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Rice. I am a proud downtown resident in District Three. I am also president of San Jose Day Nursery, where we have been serving underprivileged children since 1916 regardless of their ability to pay. Pre-COVID, we had a program where pre-K children would come out and have brown bag lunches for the unhoused. It was a very successful program, and it taught the children empathy and involvement in the community. Unfortunately, we've had to abandon that program post-COVID because primarily the unhoused people in our community, which is Eighth and Santa Clara, so across the street from here, just aren't the type of people that we would have our children interact with. Now, previously, there was no issue. Now, the unhoused people that are left in the streets unfortunately are not. We abandoned our program. We're going to ask that the city not abandon the support of the people that are on the streets, but do it in a way that we can make in a passive and compassionate way, and active intervention for these people, which is what they need.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Andres Solomonov. I'm here because I care deeply about San Jose and the well-being of all our residents, housed and unhoused. Homelessness is a complex issue, but allowing people to decline help and remain on the streets, especially when public safety and community health are at stake, is not compassion, it's neglect. San Jose has invested millions in supportive services. While these resources may not meet every need, they do exist, and when they are available, they must be used. Dignity and accountability can go hand in hand. Please support the mayor's June budget message and help ensure that no one is left behind or left outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker starts, I'd like to call Eric Schoenauer, Kira Kazantzis, and Gianella Ordenez. Come on down. Go ahead.
My name is Deb St. Julian. I'm a member of Serge and a D2 resident. The proven solution to homelessness is building deeply, more deeply affordable homes. There is no evidence-based research that shows criminalizing homelessness decreases it. In fact, studies show such actions divert resources from other services that are more effective. The city needs to focus on service-first housing and outreach strategy. I agree with Santa Clara County leaders that include retired judges, the DA, the sheriff, the county executive, that have called the mayor's budget "a quick fix political fantasy, misguided, counterproductive, unwise diversion of funds, half-baked and ill-conceived." Let's do something that's more than political theater. Support Campos memorandums 311 and 312. Work with your county partners instead of gaslighting them. Reject ineffective harmful punitive enforcement. Expand housing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Leif Benson, and I'm a political science student at Berkeley. I'm not here because I have a salary at stake. I'm here because I have a city at stake, and for me, that's everything. In Chicago, a man was shot in the leg, and that was logged as a disturbance instead of a shooting. The dashboard said crime went down, but the violence was the same. That's what happens when you tie pay to metrics. You stop solving the problem and start managing the number. There's a principle called Campbell's Law. It's in my Management 101 textbook. When you tie rewards to numbers, those numbers get gamed. If housing placements become the goal, will we start counting motel stays as success, even if those people are back on the street a month later with no support and no follow-up? If we call that a win, what are we really rewarding? We don't have to adopt this to let it fail the people in San Jose.
Thank you. That's your time. Also Kylie Clark, Dennis Cunningham, and I think it's Leon, Linyana Lee. Come on down. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Worm. I'm here to talk about the homeless housing. Don't think of this as a housing program. Think of it as a development program for people. Building comfortable housing is important, and everybody deserves a place to stay. Thanks. These housing areas should be more like a campus than a housing complex. Give people what they need to get back on their feet. If they need to get healthy, help them with that. If they need some training, provide training. In all cases, help them find jobs. Give them a purpose and ability to better themselves, and those who can will. Continually creating more housing is not the single answer. Developing people is the answer. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Mahan, members of the council. My name is Eric Schoenauer, fifth-generation San Josean and downtown resident. I hope that you'll support the budget as proposed. We can't wait any longer to truly move the needle on housing production. An effective housing strategy can unleash a virtuous cycle of investments that will lead to economic prosperity for our residents, fiscal health for our city budget, and improved quality of life for our neighborhoods and business districts. Housing is the foundation of our economy, and the lack of and cost of housing is the root of many of our problems: record-high rents, homelessness, workers and businesses moving away. The budget that is before the council takes a balanced approach and brings focus to housing production. It'll fund efforts to remove impediments in the general fund, revise the zoning code, and secret procedures to streamline the process. It also includes $60 million for affordable housing. Please support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Raoul Alpana, come on down. Julie Wiltshire and Lori Landis. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dennis Cunningham, and I live in District Three. I support the mayor's budget message and the focus on accountability. What we have been doing to address the unhoused and homeless issue has not fully been working. We need to try new and compassionate policies to help our most vulnerable residents. Building additional shelters, working with the county to provide services, and yes, requiring people who refuse help to get the help they need are all necessary to make progress on the problem. Our public safety resources respond to incidents caused by and endured by homeless persons, yet they are allowed to live on the streets and public spaces. Let's bring everyone indoors and provide necessary services. Let's show compassion for the folks who need help and provide it even when they refuse. Let's not abandon our most needy residents.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raoul Aldana. I'm a downtown resident and a condo owner at the ADA just down the street. So I'm here to express my support for the mayor's budget message to address the unhoused people and to get the support they need to live a better life. You know, just while walking the street, just from walking, walking here, which is only two blocks away, I saw a person right in front of the 7-Eleven just relieving himself about 15 minutes ago. And I see that every, I see that every day, and it's just very heartbreaking. You know, I had two brothers who suffered from addiction, and they both died from addiction. And I, so I'm very, I witnessed how it looks, and I witnessed it every day in my life here in this area. So I believe taking some action is better than taking no act.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. Alex, I can't read the last name, but go ahead. Just don't start yet. Alex from the North Side. Tin Cow. Natalie Lopez. Come on down. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Julie Wiltshire. I'm, I live in Nagley Park, right around the corner. I used to be a council member in Montessorano, and now I'm an immigration lawyer. I work on Alameda. I have my own firm, helping all kinds of people. And I drive down Santa Clara, down past SAP to my office and back, so I see a lot of what goes on. I see the homeless people, and it breaks my heart. I totally support the mayor's budget. I think something needs to be done. These people are helpless, either because of mental disorders or because of drug addiction. Something needs to be done. I don't think it's too hasty to do something to create housing, to give people dignity. So please, consider what I've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. Hi, George. My name is Lori Landis, and I'm here in support of the mayor's budget. I think that we do have to do something for the people, and I like what he has to say. But I'm actually here to talk about something else, and that's something else that we very much need, and that is the low-cost spay and neuter program back at the shelter. I've been getting involved with the shelter on Monterey Highway a little bit, and I went there Saturday, and it was looking pretty good, but there's a lot of really big dogs there that are just left, and no one's coming for them. There's, we just need the, we need the spay and neuter program back to help all of the animals with the overcrowding and everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Gloria Flores, come on down, and Jaime Alvarado. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tin Cow, resident of District Two. I'm here to support the mayor's budget message. Often, people choose to live outdoor because they have a severe addiction or mental health issues. Two hundred of our homeless neighbors die every year. The more we let them leave outdoor, the worse their health condition becomes. We need to bring them indoor and provide needed treatment by the county. I also support accountability. I ask you all to vote for the mayor's budget message in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, city council members. As a woman living in this city, I no longer feel safe. Homeless encampments are everywhere, near stores, gas stations, even residential areas. There's a car parked next to my house. It's been there for weeks, non-operational, no tags, tarps on the windows. I don't know who's in there. I've been attacked to getting gas several times. I've been attacked in grocery store that, next to my house. My private property has been damaged. I don't go out after dark. I'm constantly on high alert, and it's taking a toll on my well-being and my mental health. I'm exhausted. The city feels unsafe. There's trash everywhere, dry brush, overgrown weeds, abandoned bikes, shopping carts, graffiti. This is not the city that I grew up in. And yet, as this crisis grows, our city leadership continues to collect full salaries. In the private sector, our pay is tied to our performance. We keep our jobs if we can't meet our goals. I urge you to tie salaries to actual results. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Alex Cerro, speaking in favor of the mayor's proposal. You're going to hear some people tell you that it criminalizes homelessness. That's fundamentally incorrect. They either don't understand the issue, or they're trying to get you to not understand the issue. It does not criminalize homelessness when a person has a choice. They have a choice to go to shelter, but if they then choose instead to go to the waterways or the parks or the sidewalks and do, and make a mess there, that's something different. That's trespassing. That's what's being criminalized. Now, there is, the concept of criminalizing homeless is real. There is, that can be done. That happens when there is no choice. A homeless person has to put down their possessions and lay their head down eventually. If they have no choice but to do that on public land or private land, and all land is either public or private, that is criminalizing homelessness. But the mayor's proposal does not criminalize homelessness because they have a choice, and they are choosing to go to the park.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. Before you start talking, I'd like to call Jeremy Berus, Eliza Albarado, and Crystal Gonzalez. Come on down. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Gloria Flores Cerro. I'm a lifelong resident of the North Side neighborhood. I'm here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget measure and his push for greater accountability. I also want to thank Vice Mayor Pam Foley for her supporting the messages, just like I am. Today is my birthday, and I hate public speaking, but I'm here because I believe this is the most important thing that I can do today. I live one block from Bequesto Park, five blocks from Japantown, and nine blocks from the Downtown Core. I love that I can walk and ride my bike to get coffee, go to farmers markets, and now to restaurants. I make every effort to support local small businesses. My hairdresser's on Post Street, I get my nails done in Japantown, and most of my family and friends live within a two-mile radius from me. One thing I love to do is ride my bike and go out to eat when out-of-town friends come to visit. Last year, our friends visited from Seoul, which is one of the cleanest cities in the world, and we walked to Japantown to visit the museums and eat. On our way, there was-
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Council members, my name is Jaime Alvarado, resident of District Five. I am here to remind you that in San Jose, Donald Trump did not win, yet I fear that you're about to vote in a very, vote in a very Trumpian tactic. Weaponizing our police department against our fellow homeless residents is a radical step that is just like the ICE raids that are happening all around the country right now. I urge you to reject the idea of criminalizing our homeless neighbors. Doing so is an outright betrayal of our fellow residents who suffer under the heartless, the heartless rules of the game of winners and losers in modern-day capitalism. And to my fellow residents, I say if this council dares to criminalize homelessness, it is our duty to step in the way of these actions and prevent them from happening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Berus, Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. And I urge the mayor and council to invest 1.5 million in the city budget for increased legal and outreach services for people facing mass deportation. We support option one in Councilmember Ortiz's budget memo to use funds from the Budget Stabilization Fund. You could also fund this urgent need by redirecting some of the funding from the proposed SJPD Quality of Life unit. We saw widespread ICE raids hit Los Angeles over the weekend, and we are likely to see the same thing in San Jose soon. The Trump administration is just ramping up, as they are planning to spend a record $45 billion on immigration enforcement, which is 10 times more than what the government has currently been spending. The good news is that people facing deportation who have access to legal representation have a way better chance at a positive outcome. The time to act is now. We can't afford to wait until mid-year to revisit this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Jesus Ochoa, Sitlali Ortiz, and Gerardo Leera.
We're here as a group, so I'm going to start first. My name is Alisa Marina Alvarado. Good evening. I'm here as, to support the Amigos de Guadalupe request for funding for legal services for immigrant families. And that is, right now, one of the few ways that families can protect themselves and avoid being separated. Thank you. And we want to share, we want to share something with you that kind of shows what our experience, what we're experiencing now in our community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. My name is Cristal. I'm a proud mother of two beautiful children. My husband and I work very hard every day to provide for our families. We want our children to have big dreams. Both are doctors. Both our children want to be doctors. I'm finding it hard to dream these days. I'm having nightmares of our families being separated, of living without my family. I fear that my children will come home and I won't be there. My family deserves the right to dream together, and my son is here to share a little bit about his dreams.
Good evening. My name is Jesus. I am 15 years old and the son of two hard-working parents who brought me to this country at a young age. Thanks to them, I had the chance to follow my dreams, get an education, and I am like any other kid here. I play soccer, go to school, and I hope one day to go to medical school and become a doctor. All of this is possible because of my parents and the risks they took for my sister and I. I hope you will help us make our dreams a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Nicholas Hurley, Bill Roth, and Maritza Maldonado. Come on down.
Hi, everyone. My name is Itali. I was born here in the United States. My parents have done everything in their power to give me and my brother the life they couldn't have. My dream is to go to college and to be a doctor too, just like my older brother. I'm 12 years old, and I'm in the seventh grade. I would like to campaign to get elected for my student council at my school. I like to play volleyball with my friends, and I like to read on my free time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes, members of the Consilio. My name is Gerardo. I'm the proud father of these two beautiful children. I'm also very proud of my wife, here Cristal, who shared a little bit. She works so hard, two jobs, two jobs she works and still finds time to support our children with their schoolwork. You see, I've been here for about 26 years, and I have dreams too. I've been working as a landscaper this whole time, but I know that here, I also have the possibility of owning my own business someday. I was forced from my hometown in Mexico, my birthplace, the land of my ancestors. Our homelands were split by these fronteras, these borders, you see. Our hometown was stricken with extreme poverty and violence, and it was that violence that forced me from my homelands, and what's bringing me here today, forced to be here. Thank you.
All right, another illegal.
Let me go. I have rights.
I haven't done anything.
Please, we need a lawyer.
We can't afford a lawyer.
We need a lawyer.
We need a lawyer.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Maritza Maldonado, founder and executive director of Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. We thought it was important for you to bring the reality of what our families are going through daily. They are getting ripped apart in our community. Trump's budget will only increase tenfold, and the number of agents will continue to tear our families apart. We're going to be seeing things that we've never seen before. Tens of thousands of San Jose residents are already tearing- Tens of thousands of San Jose residents are already terrified, innocent people who have committed no crime. The least a city can do is to provide funding for legal services. $500,000 is not enough. We need at least $1.5 million to hire more lawyers and outreach workers. We support-
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker, Stephanie Jade. Come on down. Michaela Hammer, Michelle Longos, and Sofra Lozano. So, oh, I think that says Sofia. Sofia Lozano. Come on down. Go ahead.
I'm Stephanie Jane, and I'm reading the words of a friend who did not feel safe speaking here today. I am a community leader of Immigration Justice Group from Amigos de Guadalupe. I urge the council to invest $1.5 million for immigration services. Nine years ago, I was forced to leave my country due to widespread violence from organized crime. They raped, killed, extorted money from businesses, kidnapped, and if you didn't want to work with them, they would make you and your entire family disappear. In addition, there was a lack of protection from the government in my state. The situation in my community was unsustainable, and I feared for my children's safety and my own. Thanks to the support of two organizations, I was able to obtain asylum and later permanent residency. Initially, I arrived with my three children, and later I was able to reunite my family by bringing my fourth daughter after she was almost killed by the cartels. Now she is better and safe from those criminals.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor of San Jose. My name is Michaela Hammer Longos, and I'm here to read the testimony of a lovely woman who is not comfortable speaking publicly. Here it is. I am a community leader with the Immigration Justice Group from Amigos de Guadalupe. I am a hard-working, single mother with three American citizen children. I have lived here for 33 years in San Jose. This place is my heart, and I don't see myself living anywhere else. This is our home. And what saddens me the most is that one day we could be separated from my children and at the same time from my grandchildren, and not being able to see them grow up breaks my heart every night. I ask that you give us some peace of mind by approving the 1.5 million we need for the Rapid Response Network of lawyers and navigators to support us as we are under attack from the federal government. My family and I live in uncertainty with sadness and anxiety that President Trump and his cabinet are carrying out against our community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Michelle Longos, and I'm here to offer testimony of a lovely woman who is afraid to speak publicly. She wishes to urge the council to invest 1.5 million in immigration services. I am a leader with the Organizing Committee of Amigos de Guadalupe, and I am an American-born citizen. 36 years ago, my parents came to this country with the hope of a better future and to raise a family. When I was a child, ICE arrested my father in our home. My mother was very scared, so decided to return to Mexico with me, where my father eventually joined us. I mostly grew up in Mexico and eventually had four children of my own. With so much violence in Mexico, my husband and I decided to try to move back to the US. But the changes in immigration policy during the first Trump administration made it so I could only come back with my youngest child, one child.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yolita Noelia and Ms. Rayan. Come on down.
My name is Sophia. I am a resident of D6. Thank you, council members, mayor, and Mr. Macahe for your leadership. I am here to support the allocation of city resources to provide legal representation to people detained by ICE. The abuse of power and lack of due process shown by the federal administration are creating fear and intimidation across all the immigrant community, including green card holders. Allocation of money and giving access to legal representation is morally right, but it is also a pragmatic and concrete action towards stopping the overreach and abuse of power we are experiencing in our state. It is a step towards creating our own framework and agreements on how we in San Jose respond to this constitutional crisis. This council is working really hard to solve very pressing problems in San Jose. And in that same vein, we need to put in place agreements as a city on how to, on how together we stand against cruelty, overreach, and lack of due process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I am a community leader of Amigos de Guadalupe Grupo de Justicia Migratoria. Today is time for you to advocate for an essential intervention in our community, a full allocation of $1.5 million in the city budget for immigration services. This funding is crucial for implementing a comprehensive, know your rights approach that will significantly support the immigration community. We cannot wait for immigration officials to come and separate vulnerable children from their parents, parents coming to work, not to commit crimes. The immigrant community has been vital to the properties of Santa Clara country, contributing substantially through taxes each year. I want to express how scared I feel due to everything happening around us.
Thank you. That's your time.
Buenas tardes. Soy líder comunitaria del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria Amigos de Guadalupe. ¿Saben usted de la razón por la que estamos aquí?
Immigration Justice, Friends of Guadalupe. Do you know the reason why we are here now asking you to support us? Invest 1.5 million of the municipal budget in immigration services to support the migrant community with greater legal representation and education. Know your rights. I ask the council to approve option one of Councilor Ortiz's budget memorandum, not option two, which the community cannot wait for. Seeing what's happening in Los Angeles, there's a lot of desperation, fear, stress, panic. My community is not criminals. We are not immigrants. We are workers. We've come to work. I leave with the fear of never returning to see my children, my family, my grandchildren. We've just come to work. Please help us. Thank you.
I'd also like to call Mauricio Viro Vupala, Ramesh Kunda, and Varun Mukha. Go ahead.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Noelia. Soy miembro del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria. Y incito al alcalde al consejo a apoyar la solicitud de amigos de Guadalupe invirtiendo 1.5 millones del presupuesto municipal en servicios migrantes para apoyar a la comunidad. Ya que la administración de Trump planea gastar una cifra de 45 mil millones, como persona y como inmigrante les suplico su apoyo. Ya que al invertir esa gran cantidad de millones de dólares para deportar a nuestra comunidad nos sería justa. Ya que muchas personas como nosotros venimos a este hermoso país a trabajar y a salir adelante. Ya que muchos somos sustentos de nuestros hijos. Yo tengo cinco hijos, y yo y mis esposos somos-
And a member of the Immigrant Justice Group, and I urge the mayor and the council to support Guadalupe's friends' request, investing 1.5 million of the municipal budget in immigrant services to support the community, since the Trump administration plans to spend a figure of $45 billion as a person and as an immigrant. I beg for your support, since investing that large amount of millions of dollars to deport our community, it would not be fair, since many people like us come to this beautiful country to work and get ahead, since many of us are the breadwinners of our children. I have five children, and my husband and I are their brethren.
Good evening, mayor, council. You guys know why we're here, okay? I'm sure you guys watch the news. Our families are being tear apart, okay? We need to find a point, one point, whatever, $1.5 million, please. We're very tired, okay? They're terrorizing our families. What are we waiting for? The military to come here? This is what the regime wants to happen, and it's happening. We look up to you to give us the tools necessary to fight this fight. We will fight the fight. We will fight the fight. We will defend our families. We will defend our community, but we need resources. We need legal resources to fight this good fight. It depends on what side of history you want to be. You want to be on the side of the history of the regime? Or you want to be on the side of history where we can say the city council and the mayor and the vice mayor and the city attorney and the city manager, a step-
Thank you. Next speaker.
Greetings, mayor and council members. My name is Orlena Mejia. I am the president of Lumbloff Center Neighborhood Association. I'm here today to speak in support of mayor's budget message. We need to make it easier, faster, and therefore cheaper to build. We need to streamline our permitting process and reduce the regulation that is standing in the way of housing being built at all income levels. As a San Jose resident who cares about addressing our housing crisis, I am asking that you vote for the mayor's budget in full.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, honorable mayor Matt Mahan and the honorable council. My name is Ramesh. I'm the community member, part of the Bay Area Indian community. I'm here today to support mayor's June budget. I want to take opportunity, opportunity to thank our vice mayor Pam Foley for supporting the message what Matt Mahan is promoting to the community. So particularly, I want to highlight the homelessness. We need cost-effective shelters and must require people to be, you know, safe and treated well so that they can become better citizens and they can be, you know, having a life just like everyone else. So I would like to request mayor and the city council to take necessary steps to safeguard the homelessness people at the-
Thank you. Next speaker. Before you speak though, I'd like to call Vicki Harrison, Scott Weber, Lisa Rosenbloom, and Sandra Weber. Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Vijaya Asuri. And we know our city is opening more safe and dignified places for people to go than any other city in the West Coast. And as a concerned resident, I urge you to support the mayor's June budget message in full. We need fair reinforcement of laws for everyone, cleaner and safer streets, and stronger management of encampments to prevent fires and hazards. San Jose is making real progress by expanding shelter options. Let's keep going and push for more treatment resources too.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Scott Weber. I'm a resident of D6, living right by the Alameda and Stockton. And I'm here today to support the mayor's message of hope, a message of inclusion, and a message of trying to help people better themselves as a person who has had colleagues whose children were lost to them. They were out on the streets, amphetamine, fentanyl, and were gone for large periods of time, unable to be found. Once they were brought in, they were found, they were with their families, and now they're productive members of society. We have had in our area, in our neighborhood, and I was hoping to show this on the screen, several people who desperately need help, and they don't know it. They reside on the streets, they defecate on the streets, and they leave their refuse on the streets. And one of these individuals in particular, I was gonna try to project this, but he was living at the corner of Stockton and Taylor on the left side. The city came and moved him, and he moved to the right side. And then after a couple more weeks, they came and they moved him again, and he is now about 10 yards. It's been 10 yards after 10 yards after 10-
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Tim Gill and David Hindell. Come on down.
Hello, council members and mayor. My name is Vicki Harrison. I'm a faculty member at San Jose State, a member of SURGE, and a District 3 voter. I will call this public comment, "Please heed the voters." This comment is an appeal to each of you. I ask you to remember the timeline of the District 3 election now underway. For a while, it seemed that the candidate who most clearly aligned himself with the mayor's message and budget priorities was a frontrunner. But then the mayor began his active campaign against our unhoused neighbors, specifically his responsibility to shelter and his funding priority to hire a police unit to conduct his arrests. And as you know, the voters of District 3 responded by sending a clear message. We rejected this direction for our city. Do note that District 3 voter-
Thank you. Next speaker.
Honorable mayor Mayhan, vice mayor Foley, council members, thank you for hearing us today. My name is Sandra Weber. I'm a D6 mom. I'm a mom with a family history of mental illness, addiction, and suicide. I have several friends, moms, with kids who've been on the street. Psychological distress comes in many forms with unique histories. But something stuck with me that one friend mentioned. She said, "I'm relieved when my son is arrested." I was stunned. She continued, "When he's on the streets, he doesn't want to be found. He doesn't want help. But when something disrupts his environment and drugs no longer cloud his thoughts, he journals, he does yoga, he makes plans for the future. But for him, the draw to his street family is strong. It's life and death out there, and that itself can be a pull on his heartstrings. I hope the street doesn't kill my son." I support Mayor Mayhan's budget, and I-
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Kelsey Colson, Lena Nguyen, Denise Moms, and Hung Nguyen. Come on down.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Lisa Rosenbloom, and I am a resident of D3. There's a saying that I used to use quite a bit in my over 30 years' career in local government, and that is, "Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good." Is this a perfect budget? No. But it does make a good attempt to address the quality of life issues we residents face on a daily basis. I recently read that during the summer months, our fire department answers calls to encampments every single day. So yesterday, I was on a bike ride along the beautiful Coyote Creek, and I saw an open, unattended fire. We called 911, and while waiting for the truck, I saw smoke from another encampment a few miles down the road. We need long-term and compassionate solutions to address homelessness, but we need to address the quality of life issues with an enhanced code of conduct. In summary, to quote the mayor from a recent Mercury News article, "We don't like the situation, but we can't leave it as is either." Let's not leave it as is-
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Tim Gill. I'm a resident of District 10. I've worked as an attorney in downtown San Jose for over 30 years. I've owned a building at 46 West Santa Clara Street since 1999, and I have three ground-level tenants. I support Mayor Mayhan's proposal to get people off the street faster and hold our elected representatives accountable for the following reasons. The status quo is not working, and it has not worked for many, many years. Unhoused people have had a negative impact on my business and all of my neighbors in downtown. They're defecating and urinating inside my building. I've had somebody have a drug overdose in my stairwell. I've had people engage in sexual acts just outside our building. People have broken our windows at least a half a dozen different times so that we've had to put up what I call a ghetto gate. People sleep in front of my building. I have a hard time getting in the building in the morning.
Thank you. That's your time. Sandra McKinnon and Julie Anderson. Come on down. Go ahead.
Kathleen, Matt Mayhan. The problem is that the price of the house is too good. I am the one who does charity work, giving out food and clothes during the cold winters. Thank you, Mr. Market, for helping addicts to recover, for stamping out drug trafficking, and for following the stream of reticie. T2NAR speaker, Brand Foot. Hello, and whom we're Yakaman. Knowing the problem of housing, I realize that everyone needs a place to live that is fully equipped and airy. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Colson. Lately, I've been hearing one of my favorite expressions quite frequently. You've got to have skin in the game. What is skin in the game? It's accountability. It's empowerment. It's having a vested interest in the successful outcome. Our city is often lacking in accountability. We have an animal shelter that for three years has become a disgrace to our city and the animals they proclaim to care about. We have a scandal in the fire department as it comes to light that controlled substances disappeared for two years. The audit of the animal shelter merely shined a light on the issues. Accountability involves real change. So how do we get real change? We change. I'm asking you all to lean in to change. Lean into the unknown. Without brave change, nothing changes, and no one wants the status quo to continue. So lean in, vote yes on the accountability budget, and let's work together so that everyone in our city feels and sees that we have skin in the game. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
I 100% support our Mayor's responsibility to shelter and pay-to-performance initiatives. And I know I'm too late, but if I could cash in on one miracle, the San Jose Flea Market would remain right where it is. We would invest even more funds and make it the best flea market anywhere in the United States. The San Jose Flea Market keeps 450 independent small businesses in operation, attracts over a million people annually, who spend up to $4 million. It is family-friendly, gives locals and visitors a safe, fun, outdoor place to shop, picnic, socialize, and take in live music. But San Jose is closing this treasure and historic landmark at 1590 Berriessa, while at 1300 Berriessa gave six acres for 85 homeless to park their RVs, visibly attracting more homeless and more RVs. It's clearly not safe and clearly not family-friendly. I do not understand.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name's Gary Cooper. Forget about the raise. I hope this board be wise, make a wise decision. Take care of the homeless. Take care of this problem. Although they got metal issue, get them off the street where the families, the kids, and all can be safe. You know, people need saving and stuff like that. They're angry, they're bitter. But do your job. Make a very wise decision to take care of this problem before it get out of control. I like what the mayor did with San Francisco and all that and everything, but we need to take care of San Jose. When I came here 47 years ago, it was a beautiful place. We didn't have homeless with weapons, guns, and knives and all that, all that kind of stuff on the street. Let's take care of this problem. Don't drop the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
We have a crisis in San Jose. We are under siege from homeless criminals. San Jose has become a sanctuary city for homeless criminals. Laws do not apply to homeless criminals. They face no consequences for their action. San Jose has turned a blind eye to their criminal behavior, and as a result, law-abiding citizens are living in fear of being victimized. San Jose's lack of enforcement is putting the HTLC community in danger, hard-working, tax-paying, law-abiding contributors. The citizens of Berriessa support Mayor Mahan's responsibility to shelter initiative. Please revisit the Dignity Acres Emergency Campground proposal submitted to City Council at a previous meeting. Dignity Acres Emergency Campground is the solution to the homeless crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Also, Hien Nguyen, come on down, DeeDee O'More, Mike Carter. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Brian Rathgen, and I am a resident of District Three, also representing Recovery Cafe this evening and looking forward to more collaboration with the city. As was just mentioned, the status quo is not working, so I'm in support of Mayor McMahon's towards more accountability. So I do support, and I'm asking you to vote for the Mayor's budget in full regarding the homeless crisis. So yeah, of course, these people need help with their situations, but there's obviously fire hazard and water quality issues. But, you know, the big picture is the Super Bowl's coming here soon, so we got to tighten up the blight and make the city, you know, vibrant for tourists and for small businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, Brian Dragus, District Ten. So I support the Mayor's proposal for especially that which deals with homelessness. Last Thursday, I went and took my two grandkids to Happy Hollow Zoo. They have a nice little petting zoo. There's animals missing from that zoo. And the reason is, there was three dogs several years ago. One of them, at least one of them, from a homeless person, who went in there and killed four miniature ponies, butchered them, and a donkey. And what if these were kids going to school? What, you know, we have to, we don't feel safe walking on some of the paths here. We need to feel safe. We need to have, you know, a safe, clean environment. Thousands of fires, millions of pounds of trash. I support the Mayor's focus on this.
Thank you, next speaker.
Mayor, Representatives, I didn't plan on making a speech, but I'm glad to see that the line is short. I've lived in San Jose for 25 years. I'm the son of a Vice Mayor in a different country. I know you have a very tough job. I like your compassionate approach to a very difficult job. I know you all have a really tough job. I'm an Iron Man, Ultraman, ultra runner. I've run every corner of the city and beyond, and what I see lately when I run and when I cycle, I'm really concerned. But I know it's a very tough job, and the approach that you take, the compassionate approach is the right approach. I wish you luck. I know it's a tough job. I am on a local board. I'm a president of H O A. I'm a leader of a very big business in your city over here. I hear the people speak, but we are concerned that it's done the right way, so just want to wish you luck.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, Vice Mayor Foley, and Councilmembers. My name is DeeDee O'More, and I am a resident of District Two. First, thank you to each of you for your public service. These are challenging times, and to do your job is not easy. I'm here today to speak to each of you in support of Mayor's June budget message and his push for greater accountability. Thank you, Vice Mayor Foley, for your support in this initiative. Your pay should not be tied, excuse me, should be tied to progress, just like mine is, just like my boss expects me to deliver. I, too, am asking you to deliver. Our streets are still dirty. We have thousands of people living outside. Residents and families deserve a chance to be, feel safe and be safe. And until we have measurable improvement, I'm asking you not to give yourself a raise. We have work to do, not just you on this council. This is about you and I joining forces to make our city and restore it. So.
Thank you, that's your time. Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to say that I have 260 cards to go. I keep getting questions on, "Have you called my name yet? Where am I in the queue?" I have, I can't go through 260 cards, so just wait for your name. And I just wanted to give you guys an update. So Jean-Marie White, come on down, Antonina, come on down, and Cindy Vinsom. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. I'm here today to support the Mayor's June budget message and ask for greater accountability. I also want to thank Vice Mayor Foley for supporting the message just as I am today. I live in District Two. And our neighborhood has a lot of the emergency housing units in our neighborhood, and we need to continue to build those units to take care of our unhoused population. I know our council member is passionate about parks and kids being safe in parks, but until we can get the homelessness situation rectified and get the homelessness, homeless unhoused folks out of our parks and into shelter and get them the support that they need to be contributory citizens to the city, we need to move.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Hien Nguyen, and I am from the Alum Rock Village Business Association, a part of District Five. I'd like to address that I support your decision to help with the homeless issue. As business owners, we have been battling this continued problem for the past few years, and it has increased, it has decreased, it's come back, and we think that there should be a more permanent solution. And it's wrong for these people to live in squalor in our own backyards, in front of our businesses. Businesses are struggling. We can't survive right now with the recession, and therefore, we need the help from the mayor and the city to help us make our city.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Vincent, and I'm in District Three. Thank you for giving me this forum to speak with you. I am here specifically to talk about the Responsibility to Shelter proposal, and I urge all of the council members to support this issue. Can we all agree that some people are homeless, not because of the high cost of housing, but that they have other challenges in their lives, and there's a variety of interventions that are needed? I look at the Responsibility to Shelter initiative as calling upon accountability. The fires, the blight, the ecological damage to our waterways, and the destruction of our precious green space is a result of nobody taking accountability. And I think that the city with building the housing and the county needs to come forth and do their responsibility for the behavioral treatments that they are responsible for.
Thank you, next speaker. Also, come on down Azazel, Larry Whitaker, and Ally Victory. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for letting us speak tonight, too. My name is Antonina, and I live in Hyde Park, District Three, and I support the Mayor's Responsibility to Shelter proposal. Living in District Three and close to Guadalupe River Park, I've had firsthand experience with members of the unhoused. I recognize that some homeless members refuse to accept any help when offered. They continue to camp on our streets, our city streets, and freeway embankments, embankments. And in one case, an unhoused woman was yelling at me using foul language for some reason. I have no, I don't know why. This plan helps people who are unable to make rational decisions due to mental illness or addiction. It gives them the opportunity and sometimes the nudge to get into treatment. It's about shared responsibility. The city is stepping up with beds and services. Now we're asking those who are offered shelter to step up, too. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, next speaker.
Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, Councilmembers. My name is Jean-Marie White, and I live in Nagley Park. Earlier this year, while walking home from lunch near St. James Park, my husband and I were followed and threatened by a man in visible mental distress. A police officer witnessed the incident and intervened. It was a stark reminder that even in 2025, the situation on our streets is marginal at best. This isn't just a housing crisis, it's a crisis of untreated addiction, mental illness, and policy paralysis. We need some form of housing now, not 20 years from now. We need triage for those with acute needs, and when offers of help are refused, the city needs to, the ability to act to protect public safety and dignity. Please support the Mayor's budget in full, including Responsibility to Shelter, Pay for Performance.
Thank you, next speaker. Also, Hong Kao, come down, and Deacon New To. Go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Larry Whitaker. I am here to speak in favor of the Mayor's budget message. We need to end illegal camping. When people choose to live outdoors, they affect the quality of life for everyone else. I run on the streets and trails of San Jose. I see filthy campsites in many other areas where I go. The drinking fountains along Los Alamitos Creek Trail are dry because people stole the copper tubing, copper water pipes. On a hot day, it was always nice to have that water available. People can't enjoy that anymore. When I run at night, some places have no streetlights because people are stealing the wires to sell for recycling. There are some areas where we feel unsafe. We need to build cost-effective shelters and require all persons camping illegally to come inside. 200 people are dying outside every year in San Jose, and the longer we allow them to live outside, the worse it'll become. I'm asking that you vote in favor of the Mayor's message. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Ally Victorine, President of the D seven Leadership Group, which is a coalition of the neighborhood associations in D seven. Although I am here speaking for myself, what I'm going to say is the opinion of many of our members. In general, I support the Mayor's budget proposal, including his Responsibility to Shelter policy, which I will, I feel will help those who cannot help themselves. We have seen improvement in our neighborhoods, trails, and parks, and feel that the city is on the right track. However, it is important that we continue to invest in homelessness prevention, which I feel should have a larger percentage in the Measure E reallocation. I do not support the Pay for Performance Plan. I feel it is a distraction and could too easily backfire and easily gained. I also hope that the Emergency Medical Services Field Coordinator Program can be reinstated and that the Family, Friend, and Neighborhood Early Education Program can be protected from being.
Thank you, next speaker.
Evening, City Council. My name is Azazel Homquist. I'm a resident of D three. I like to start off by saying, "Resources work." I'm a survivor of homelessness, addiction, and trauma. I'm also a client of the YWCA Alexian Health Clinic and member of Recovery Cafe. It is a process to house and heal someone. We need more resources for those that are suffering homelessness. Homelessness is not a crime, but a lack of government resources and care, caused by lack of education, equal education, medical care, and mental health. Funding 24/7 trust, preserving Measure E funds, and not criminalizing the traumatized people is important. The cause of homelessness is involved, and we'll take your patience in providing resources. The equal quality of life is needed to succeed for all of us. We are America in our melting pot. Protect our homeless and our undocumented immigrants. Provide a resource ladder that can realistically be used to recover and succeed. Patience is key and understanding that it takes a village.
Thank you, next speaker. Sam, also, come down. Before you go, Sam Ho Han.
Hi.
Wait, 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 wait.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember.
Sorry, one second. We need to wait for the clerk. And again, I would ask folks, use your jazz hands. If we start having cheering, we can't hear the clerk, and the next person doesn't need to, doesn't know when they can go. Tony, we're going to wait on the clerk first. Go ahead.
Sam Ho Han Duong, and Nguyen Juan Nam, come on down.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, my name is Hong Kao. The city of San Jose has worked very hard to help this 2025 proposal budget, exceptionally in this time of the city budget shortfall. Thank for the support of the mayor, the vice mayor, and the council member when the Measure E and affordable housing project have to have sacrificed helping the homelessness and the unhoused issue. The people should not pick their lifestyle over the quality of the order and the taxpayer money. Service shelter are the best solution to help the homeless, the people who not only have the flat to live in terms of dying on the street, but also to help the medical care and the needed treatment. on the street, but also to help the medical care and the needed treatment. Having been a resident of the South Bay for the last forty-five years, I'm so proud to live in one of the pet flat to live, to continue...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Mahan, Council Members. My name is Lot Ho. I'm Deacon of the Diet Street of San Jose. I live in this city for forty-five years, from nineteen eighty. We need to continue investing in faster, cheaper solution to homelessness. I am proud that my city is opening more safe, dignified places for people to go than any other cities in the West Coast. I support Mahan on the budget. Please vote for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Ho. I am a former president of Thousand Oaks Neighborhood Association and current vice president of District Nine Leadership Group. I want to thank you, our City Council members, for your focus on addressing the key issues that we have to address in our city. And today I want to speak on three points. Number one is code of conduct. Without code of conduct, we would not have a civilized and professional environment for our meeting today. We need to have that good, sensible code of conduct and enforce it. Secondly, Responsibility to Shelter. Everyone need to have a place to stay and once we have a shelter for them to stay, we offer them one times, two times, and three times. And if they refuse it, we need to transition them into better help, get them help with treatment, mental health, or, you know, you know, addiction. And that's human. And thirdly, is pay for performance. Let's lead.
Thank you. Next speaker. Nicholas De Zuberia, Brian Trin, and Diane Dow, come on down.
Hi, my name is Kylie Clark and I'm with the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits and the Real Coalition. You've heard what's happening with HUD at the federal level. People are going to lose their housing vouchers and become homeless and San Jose is not ready. We support the member from the memo from Council Members Compost Salas and Duan to redirect Measure E funding, placing more emphasis on prevention and family homelessness and keeping the reallocation to two years. The proposals to address homelessness as they stand leave more questions than answers. Please do not approve this cruel plan that focuses on punishment when we should be focusing on services. For years, the Real Coalition has been asking for a community-designed interpersonal violence prevention and intervention program consistent with the reimagining public safety recommendations and council's previous direction. Please make this eighty thousand dollar investment as promised years ago. This budget should address what the community needs. We need housing, services, legal support, and safety, not more policing and punishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jean-Leride Doniz and I'm also with SVCN, the Real Coalition, and a District One resident. The time is now to invest in the protection of our immigrant community and we support the request from Amigos de Guadalupe and the memo from Council Member Ortiz to invest one point five million for critical immigration legal services. The level of ICE activity in Los Angeles will soon make its way to San Jose and this small investment reinforces the council's commitment to providing stability and safety to all residents. We also ask that you restore the full funding for the Older Adults Health and Wellness Program. We cannot balance the budget on the backs of our vulnerable older adults, many of whom are low-income and non-English speaking. In support of Somos Mayfair and Cisupule Collective, we applaud the funding of five hundred thousand to facilitate the revitalization of Moxa, which can serve as a multi-help center for Latino youth and residents and provide cultural services and healing that have long been disinvested from. Lastly, we oppose the proposed cuts to racial equity staffing across departments, which are essential to assuring the city is made...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, council members, my name is Nicholas De Zuberia. I am a business owner in San Jose. Senator Bin Duan is our council member. I want to say thanks. You guys have done an absolutely outstanding job. We own three properties off of Felipe, off of St. Ray Road. We've been there about seven years. We employ about a hundred and twenty-seven people and they've made a huge difference from when we first bought it. We re-appened three properties. You've been there. I just want to say thanks. I super appreciate it. And for the Hispanic community, as an immigrant to this country, I got here, I've been a janitor, I've been a lawn mower, I've been a construction worker, and I'm a business owner. We, we have some of the biggest contracts in the Bay, so I want to say, and this country's still complicated, but it's amazing you can still do it. So it's not always looking for who's gonna help you, but you gotta put in the hard work. So, thanks, Mr. Bin Duan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Before you go, John Liepelt, Jay Craddock, and Ton Tran Lam Tien, come on down.
Hello, Mayor and all the council members. My name is Brian Trin and I'm here to talk about the topic of homelessness in our city. I would like to see more accountability and fixing our crisis in our city. I understand that dealing with homeless is hard due to their addiction and mental health and illness. How are we gonna handle to unhouse the people who don't want to be honed and given care for our addiction, for their addiction and mental health issues? Come from experience, I was once homeless and was in major addiction, but I was able to get help and get out of the streets. But yeah, I just, I just want to see our, our city be nice again. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and all the council members. My name is Diane Dow. I'm here today to speak on the, on the homelessness topic to provide more fund in this area. I could like to thank, to see more improvement in this area. The budgets will help us to provide care, aid for those who need help. Also, I make them feel that they are in a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Foley, council members. My name is John Liepelt. I'm the chairman of the D Two Neighborhood Leadership Council and we support the mayor's June budget message as well as Pay for Performance and Responsibility to Shelter. Many of you work in corporate America and you know a pay raise is not guaranteed every year. Pay raises are earned and they're earned by performance and results. And we would like to see those results. We would like you to vote what's best for your consistuance, constituents, not what's best for the South Bay Labor Council. And let's not forget about all those dogs and cats at the Animal Care Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also come on down Elaine Mauid Toshul Fain and Somal Nayuk. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I am Jay Craddock. I live on District Two. I was really gonna talk about the chaotic mismanagement of One Branham, but as you already know about that, so I'm gonna pivot to two miles down the road, Two Branham and Eighty-Seven. Started out an encampment that was cleared, all good. Two days later, a person moves back in. Okay, that was fine. Now in the last month or so, there's multiple, multiple families and an incredibly tremendous amount of junk. And I know you guys know about that as well and, but the lackluster cleaning up of that encampment is getting kind of annoying when you drive by it every day. So I just appreciate a little bit more effort into cleaning this up, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Jane Tran and I'm a resident of District Two. I'm here today to speak in support of Mayor Mahan for his June budget message in full and for his push for greater accountability. Everyone housed and unhoused need to follow the law. As soon as summer comes, our streets start to get overwhelmed with trash and illegal encampment. Just last week, my house was trespassed twice. Our package was stolen and even our barbecue gas tank were taken. They even left used injection needles in front of my property. This is not acceptable. We need to take urgent action to make sure those unsheltered people stay shelter and to restore safety and order in our neighborhood. I strongly urge you to vote for Mayor Mahan in June, in his June budget message in full. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Alan Mauid. I'm president of the VEP Neighborhood Association, which is in District Two. And I'm here today to voice our strong support for the mayor's, Mayor Mahan's budget message and his Pay for Performance proposal. This proposal champions aligning compensation with results on critical issues like homelessness and public safety, reflecting Silicon Valley's merit-based culture and mirroring models used for city department heads. We recognize the concerns voiced by several council members who cautioned that this policy could unintentionally penalize those representing undeserved neighborhoods or stifle honest debate. We believe these concerns can be mitigated responsibly by developing fair, district-sensitive metrics to ensure equitable evaluation and by periodically reevaluating and refining the implementation plan. Let's break the cycle, cycle, sorry, of automatic raises without performance and show San Jose that public service demands accountability and delivery of results. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Beth Seibert, come on down. David Pandory, Mark Lewis, and Sheri Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I am a resident of Great Oaks Neighborhood, District Two. My name is Toshul. I am here to, today to voice my strong support for Mayor's June budget message and his focus on accountability, especially when it comes to addressing the crisis of homelessness. I'm speaking today not just as a resident, but as someone whose family has been directly affected by the lack of the clear policies around unsheltered homelessness. For months, we had an encampment right outside our house. The situation became dangerous. There was illegal dumping, active gas line violations, and a lot of other things. My family and I have felt very unsafe in our own neighborhood, every day wondering what will happen next. This isn't just about inconvenience, it's about public safety, mental peace, and about being able to feel secure in your own home. That is why I believe the city needs to move quickly to build more cost-effective shelters and require...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'm a resident of Great Oaks Neighborhood in District Two. I'm here to voice my strong support to the mayor's June budget message, especially the focus on improving accountability across our city. Back in March, the encampment near Great Oaks was cleared and I want to thank Mayor for making that happen. Since then, the area has been somewhat cleaner, but we are still waiting to see long-term solutions and preventative measures. It's not just enough to clean up. We need to stop these issues at the source. Like many residents, I'm frustrated by the continued presence of trash on our streets and graffiti signs on our freeways. It sends a wrong message about how we value our neighborhood. If we don't enforce consequences, we'll end up in a never-ending cycle of cleanup. That's why I'm asking you to support for a strong enforcement effort and support your budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Honorable Mayor and Council Members, thank you for your time. My name is Mary Robertson and I'm a longtime downtown D Three resident. I am speaking here tonight in support of the mayor's June budget message. I have twice been attacked by persons coming from the Guadalupe River Park Trail while walking to get groceries at Target here in downtown. The first time, the man, much larger than me, walked by, turned, and punched me twice in the face, knocking me down. The second time, just two months ago, a clearly disturbed man, also much larger than me, walked past me, turned, and charged at me, knocking me down. This is not about my stories, but about this, but about the other stories, just like mine, that go undisguised. None of us should live in fear of walking to get groceries. While the police were able to find the first man who had...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor and Council Members, my name is Scott Akeem. I'm a longtime District Three resident in downtown. I live downtown, work downtown, and eat downtown and shop downtown. My wife and I have been seeing many of you walking downtown and at downtown events. Some of, some definite progress has been made in helping to begin to get people off the streets and to help them get the help that they need. A lot of housing has actually been constructed in D Three. But all of us who are familiar with the downtown know we have a long way to go. That is why I urge you to support the mayor's June budget message in its entirety and to help the city take these compassionate, thoughtful, and effective steps that will build the accountability in our city and our citizens and will continue to make us proud of our home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Lewis, a D Three resident living adjacent to the Guadalupe River Park. Fires in our neighborhood, primarily a result of encampments within the Guadalupe River Park, are a constant problem, as you will see in the images being shown on the screen. The River Park is our community's closest park and as such, we strongly advocate for its care. We do want to acknowledge that after years of neglect, the GRP is beginning to receive city attention, including focused support on the parts of our D Three and D Six council members. But the threats and damage to the park will continue without the solutions to encampments included in the proposed budget. Please pass the budget, including all the initiatives focused on getting people off the streets and sidewalks, out of our community parks, and into shelter and care. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's David Pandory. I'm a resident of District Three, a former council member, longtime community volunteer, and a proud member of the District Attorney's Office for over twenty years prosecuting crimes from domestic violence to murder. I was in trial probably more than anybody else in the DA's office in my tenure there. I'd work long hours the weekends. And I'd go through the park and it was just so ironic, the same day that I'm appearing there on behalf of the people of the state of California, to see the absolute lawlessness that exists in the encampments and the different rules. It's truly two different cities. Stabbings, murders, and no greater place to see those differences than Columbus Park, a park that's been stolen from the people of San Jose, where the RVs have all their plates missing, they're then stripped with an intention to avoid any enforcement by the city. It's time for a change.
I own a commercial building in the Monterey Corridor. Last month, over a two-night period, we had four lobby windows smashed by the homeless individuals living across from the building. It was vandalism that cost ten thousand dollars to repair. When we installed additional cameras monitoring the equipment, the installer was harassed by the homeless. They threatened to damage the equipment and they threw rocks at him. This is just one of the many problems caused by the nearby encampments and RVs that we have to contend with. The business community deserves to be protected from the crime, violence, and harassment that the encampments inflict on businesses, our customers, and our employees. The measures outlined in the mayor's budget for accountability and Responsibility to Shelter must be adopted and implemented. I was in Ontario two weeks ago and the business district near the airport was clean, manicured, and free of encampments, RVs, and piles of trash. This is a city, this is a city of San Jose problem that other cities have solved.
Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Mike, it looks like Coons, Kelsey Clawsom, Tim Clausen, and Todd W.
What we'd like to share with you today are some photographs that have been taken over the last twelve months. These are photographs taken by residents. We look out over the Guadalupe Park and we just want you to understand what it is that we're living with and what is happening around us related to the homeless situation and our desire to improve the Guadalupe Park, bring it back to the people of the city, and use it for other purposes. Please note that each one of these pictures is an individual event. They're not multiples of the same event. Please note that each one of these pictures is an individual event. They're not multiples of the same event.
10 seconds. Okay, that's your time. Next speaker.
Neighborhood. Three, I've learned that politicians will promise many things but are lucky to achieve even just a few. It's refreshing to see a budget plan with measurable and achievable goals that focuses on our top priorities. The number-one issue in San Jose continues to be the homeless crisis. The situation is even more dire as we are now in a deficit. We must embrace plans that will help the most people for the least amount of money. The mayor's plan offers common sense and pragmatic solutions to address this crisis now. This includes the responsibility to shelter portion that will move many with addiction and mental health issues towards recovery and better quality of life. It is imperative that our council remains focused on this list of our top priorities outlined in this budget. This will allow you to reach your pay based on performance goals.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. Come on down. Jeff Levine, Ginger Cardona, Joyce Van Derit.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Mike Kraus, and I'm the president of the Penitencia Neighborhood Association in District Four. I represent 625 members in that community, and I'm here on their behalf for that community to support the mayor's budget proposal as it is. The majority of our members believe that the mayor's budget aligns with our community needs and goals, okay? They support the, we support the mayor's proposal to enhance government's accountability through pay-for-performance and the responsibility to shelter, okay? The status quo is not working. It needs to change. This mayor's budget proposal, okay, is a step in the right direction, and I encourage you to vote yes for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Tim Clausen. I'm the president of the Vendome Neighborhood Association, here speaking on behalf of myself. I am here speaking as a neighborhood advocate. That doesn't mean I am against the homeless. I stand here supporting the mayor's realistic and pragmatic solutions to address this crisis. The Columbus Park areas adjacent to our neighborhood could have been a disaster for a decade, and leaving them for another 10-plus years is not an option. We also need responsibility to shelter component, as many of our homeless have addiction and mental health issues and are incapable of making sound decisions. We cannot wait any longer to help these vulnerable people. Pay based on performance should also be a standard and allows us to set the goal matrix. The mayor's focus on these are top priorities, and these should be yours too. Once again, I'm the neighborhood advocate, and I ask that you please adopt the mayor's budget plan. The earlier pictures that we saw, that's the air we breathe daily in the Vendome.
Thank you. That's your time. David Parent, come on down. Go ahead and go to the microphone. Vasundara Tata Medhi and Mary Robertson. Go ahead.
Compassion is meaningless without action. I'm Jeff Levine. I'm a longtime resident of Roosevelt Park Neighborhood in District Three. I fully support the mayor's budget proposals this year, and which I believe will finally be the action that will demonstrate our true compassion as a civil society. His plans will not criminalize homelessness. Instead, it will be the beginning of finally getting the folks the help they need to break the cycle of homelessness. Especially in these uncertain times with the federal government slashing funding, we need to take these concrete steps to begin on our own as an enlightened city. I wrote all of you last week about the story that's haunted me for 10 years. It's about Scott Ritter, who died homeless in a cardboard box along Julian Street. I say no more. Let's...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello. My name's Ginger Cardona, and I wanted to say that I do support Mayor Mahan's proposal for the homeless and making them accountable. I do want to be able to feel safe walking on the street, taking my grandchildren to the park, and right now, I will not do that because it is a mess. In addition to that, the pay-for-performance is very important. It does need oversight, and we need to be very careful with it. But right now, we have a street paving program taking place that is an absolute disaster, and nobody seems interested in that. So there's a lot that we need to work on with pay-for-performance before it does move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is David Parent, and I'm from District Two. Thank you for all the work in helping District Two clean up the homeless situation. We, my family, fully supports the mayor's budget plan. I didn't know about the $1.5 million for, to help undocumented, prevent deportation, and excuse me if my language isn't quite correct, but we need to support that. We need to support our friends and neighbors who are living here, and believe me, if we don't support them now, they will come, they will come for us as well, so.
I can't read the name on this one at all, but it's the initials S.L. It could be Sam or Saul, and I can't read the last name. Gumby, Adolfo Gomez, Josh Malander, Yasmin Balisteros, and Joseph Rostam, come on down.
Mayor, councilpeople, I'm Gumby. Today, I'm representing the San Jose Downtown Association. I want to represent our support and our gratitude for the mayor's budget message, particularly the pay-for-performance and the responsibility to shelter. And we have the organization's downtown groundwork and sit teams that were actually working with these individuals. I'm just going to read out a letter that we had right now. "Hi, all. Just to provide an update on Tracy, the groundwork sit team for her contacted SGA PD this morning, and they were able to persuade her to move from the corner. However, she only moved a short distance south to Fountain Alley and later returned to the corner that evening. SGA PD was also able to assist with another individual and relocating them in front of the Dr. U building. Our teams will continue with their efforts to engage with Tracy, but as you know, our options are limited when someone is unwilling to cooperate or accept services. Thank you so much."
Thank you. Next speaker. Also Angela Bymaster and Suzanne Rice, come on down. Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Adolfo Gomez. I've been in downtown for about three years, working for a company now on my own business, and I'm just here to support the budget, especially the part where we want to help the homelessness and the people who need that special help. It's affecting our lives, affecting our employees, affecting the whole community. So I think we can do responsibly to do that. And the second part is the full mayor budget, when we talk about helping the downtown areas to become more active and more involved. So I always tell people, I'm always talking about downtown, and they say, yes, because you're a business owner. But yeah, but necessarily it's not that. We employ about 40 people right now in our small business, and most of those people live in different neighborhoods, and we need those dollars coming in every day to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
All right, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm representing the San Jose Downtown Association Advocacy Committee, as well as the president of Little Italy San Jose. I'm speaking in support of responsibility to shelter. Helping those who are less fortunate and being sensitive to the needs of our unhoused should still be a top priority. Equally as important are taking action for those with mental illness and drug addiction, holding all citizens accountable for their actions, and having a responsibility to shelter when shelter is offered and available. Please support the mayor's budget message on responsibility to shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yvette Lobato and Ross Martinez, come on down. Go ahead.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Sam L., president of the Hamilton Place Neighborhood Association, and I'm a resident of District Six. I'm here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget message and his push for greater accountability. I'm here today to represent the interests of my neighbors between Bascom and Meridian Avenue. My neighborhood supports the enhanced code of conduct, responsibility to shelter, and increased safety measures and governance of our trails and waterways in joint partnership between Valley Water and SGA PD. In the spring of 2023, the forest behind our neighborhood caught on fire at 2:00 a.m. because an encampment was allowed to grow for over a year. Last Wednesday, on June 4th, at 9:00 a.m., a criminal felt emboldened to commit two sexual assaults in broad daylight on the Lost Scottus Street Trail. San Jose needs to establish a reputation of safety to employers and workers across Silicon Valley. That's why I support the enhanced code of conduct and responsibility to shelter.
Thank you. Next speaker. Jamie Wallach, come on down. Tina Morrell and Herb Bonin. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Angela Bymaster. I am a resident of District Three, and I have a business in District Seven. I support the mayor's budget message in full. I am also a doctor. I treat addictions and serious mental illness. And many people are not going to get well without accountability. It is not compassionate to leave people in their addictions and their poor mental health. It's also not compassionate to force the children of District Three, who are almost entirely low-income Spanish-speaking children, to live among trash, human waste, graffiti, fires, intoxicated adults sleeping in their playgrounds, and behaving erratically. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Cheryl Lubo, come on down. Lisa Rosenbloom and Cindy Vincent.
Hello, council. My name is Ross Martinez, and I live in District Three on North Fifth Street. I'm here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget message, including the responsibility to shelter proposal. For several years, my neighborhood has struggled with chronic RV encampments, causing fires, blight, theft, and property damage. Today, my neighborhood is hosting hundreds of units of new supportive housing for the formerly homeless. I want to be proud of this fact, but so far, quality of life in our neighborhood has declined. We have more RV encampments, plus all the complexities that come with integrating hundreds of the formerly unhoused. To get us through this transition, we need some help in the streets. The county has tried to provide more outreach services in the area, but people are rejecting help more often. As thousands of new units come online, we need to make sure they are used immediately and communities hosting facilities see relief faster. For these reasons, please support the budget and proposal.
Next speaker. I accidentally called somebody who had a duplicate card, so Rosenbloom, you already spoke. I'm going to go ahead and call Aurelius Sanchez, Pam Kelly, Ed Berger, and David Burrows, come on down.
Hello, I'm Jamie. I live in the Vendome. I'm here to support the mayor's plan to require the unhoused to accept aid or receive a trespassing ticket. I say this with a heavy heart and much compassion and sympathy for the unhoused. I personally will continue to donate to services and vote for any aid towards the situation. Recently, we have seen two attempted murders in my neighborhood, one in a neighbor's backyard with an axe and one with a machete on the way to our school. A dead body was found in our park in the toddlers' area, and on five different occasions, I've seen men masturbating in the streets. But if we don't enforce basic laws like the mayor is suggesting, our less sympathetic neighbors will vote for an administration that will implement much worth. This is not about punishing the unhoused. This is not making them go away. This is about enforcing the same law for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is David Burrows. I'm a resident of D3. I'm here to support the mayor's budget message. In particular, I want to support, voice my support for the pay-for-performance. I was actually surprised that your pay isn't already tied to performance. Certainly, every place I've worked in the last 20 years, performance and pay are always highly linked. I understand that people have concerns about this, but I think it's largely a solved problem. And I really think that, losing my train of thought. I really just do think that the purpose of a salary is to help incentivize us to do the work. In other words, we sit home and watch Netflix all day. So I really hope that, even though it seems like it's voting against your own self-interest, I hope you recognize that it does provide a little nudge to help us to make the city a better place and a place we'd all love to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Manny Bakely, Zakun Lee, and Isabella, come on down. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pam Kelly, and I've lived in San Jose since 1971, and I am a District Three resident. I'm here today to support the mayor's budget message and the Responsibility to Shelter initiative. And also, from what I have heard here tonight, I'd also like to support the $1.5 million for legal aid for immigrants. On any given day in San Jose, over 6,000 individuals live on our streets, along riverbanks and in their cars. A staggering 35% to 40% of these individuals struggle with mental illness or drug addiction, severely impairing their ability to make lifesaving decisions for themselves. We have reached a point where compassionate action is not just necessary, it is urgent. I believe this policy can eliminate decades of deadlock by providing an innovative tool to reach out to those who often refuse assistance.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm speaking on behalf of Ed Berger tonight. My name is Greg Kahn. I represent Thurma, a local business based here in San Jose, District Three. We employ just over 1,000 employees locally. Our customers are recognized globally, Intel, Applied Material, Apple, Google, just to name a few. I want to thank the mayor for recently taking action. We had a homeless encampment in our area. For years, the unhoused population camping outside our building created serious challenges, including nearly $60,000 in property damage, constant safety concerns for our employees, and loss of customer access due to blocked parking. Bringing our customers to our headquarters here in San Jose was problematic, to say the least. Since the recent cleanups, our staff feels much safer, and we're finally able to operate without daily disruption. I encourage the continued investment in solutions that keep our streets safe and support both businesses and unhoused individuals with long-term housing options. The current direction is working. Please stay the course and build on this progress.
Thank you. That's your time. George Simkowitz, come on down, and Daphne Zhu. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Manu Bakala, and I am the Climate Advisory Commission Youth Representative, here to officially deliver a message on behalf of the commission. We are alarmed to see cuts in one-time funding to Climate Smart in the proposed operating budget. It is our strong recommendation that non-personnel funding to Climate Smart be instead restored to at least levels from 2022 to 2023, approximately $625,000 in total. We further recommend that a sufficient, full, and permanent base level of non-personnel funding, well over its current insufficient sum of $126,000, be determined and established for Climate Smart to be carried into future years. Climate Smart has been an incredibly successful program despite already limited resources, enabling San Jose to be a sustainability leader. We must continue and strengthen this a good example. Reductions in year-on-year funding to Climate Smart make almost no meaningful dent in the city deficit while hampering our progress on such a pressing issue. Please see our full recommendation in the agenda packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Isabella, a sophomore in high school and a member of the San Jose Team of Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. I and many other San Jose residents advise that you restore Climate Smart San Jose's funding for community-based organizations. This will enforce sustainability while protecting our community. Without adequate funding, climate change will have devastating impacts, including droughts, wildfires, species endangerment, and heat-related fatalities. The heat wave last year in July 2024 resulted in a homeless San Jose citizen's death. While cooling centers were implemented, we must address the unavoidable tragedy at the root cause: climate change. San Jose's leadership in climate action, exemplified by its 2030 carbon neutrality goal, requires continued commitment to sustainability. We will fall short of our goals if we do not increase Climate Smart San Jose's funding, including for community-based organizations and partnerships. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, mayor and city council members. Zikun Lee, Executive Director for Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. Mayor Mahan, last year, had the California Community Choice Energy Conference. You touted the San Jose Climate Smart Plan for Carbon Neutrality in 2030. It's sad to see that, over year after year, the Climate Smart non-personnel funding has been lowered every single year. There is a desire for us to continue to push for more climate action. We applaud the city for moving the Climate Smart team to the energy team to continue to work on that, but more work needs to be done because we see the dashboard on the San Jose website on Climate Smart, we're behind. We need to do more, and not just on energy, but on other aspects, on climate as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Jeff Raza or Rosa, come on down. And Dashiel Leeds. Go ahead.
George Mckevich, Midtown District Six. What I see in homelessness, six fires endangering multimillion-dollar townhomes, RVs lining our streets harassing us, our neighbors and businesses, dogs that have bitten me and my neighbors. Just last week, I was physically assaulted trying to stop a homeless person from stealing packages from our lobby. The police came quickly, but she disappeared into a warren of tents at the La Scata's Creek Trail next to Del Monte Park. Coming from a high-tech world where 50% of my compensation was based on meeting or beating objectives, I struggle to comprehend why a 5% hit to a politician's pay is not meeting objectives set by an independent committee is even worthy of discussion, much less opposition. San Jose needs to level up its game for the world to see next year. Get this budget approved. Get the work done. Strive for excellence.
Thank you, next speaker.
Dear mayor and council, my name is Daphne Zhu, and I'm a student at Lyndbrook High School and a co-lead of the San Jose Youth Climate Action Team. I urge you to increase Climate Smart San Jose's non-personnel funding at least to levels from 2022 to 23, $625,000 in total. Climate Smart is already such a small percentage of the city budget that this change is almost negligible to the budget as a whole, but would mean a world of difference for the protection of the 1 million people in our city. Especially now that we can't depend on federal support for climate, local action is more critical than ever. Climate change increases risk for countless diseases. It exacerbates homelessness. It's not a problem we can deprioritize under other issues because it's connected to each and every one, from homelessness to public health and safety. Have we forgotten our commitment to carbon neutrality by 2030? Based on Climate Smart's data, we are not at all on track to meet our goals. Our support for clean energy is commendable, but it's not enough. Without funding for partnerships with community-based...
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, city council. My name is Jeff Rozai, a student intern at Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. I am speaking to you now in response to the low budget in Climate Smart, and I encourage you to increase funding for Climate Smart San Jose and not decrease it. For the 2025-2026 fiscal year, we are behind on the 2030 Carbon Neutrality Goals set in 2015, based on the Climate Smart dashboard on the city's website, noted by the many indicators which aren't even being updated year by year. I applaud the transition of Climate Smart to the San Jose Energy Department, but we need to get more partnerships and complete the plans we're attempting to complete. The Climate Smart budget is already small, and by reducing this already limited and small budget will be limiting the impacts made on public health and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Before you go, let me call Stephanie Ligsey, Jaria... Last name starts with J. Jai Shreen Vincent and John Leepolt. Come on down. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Dashiel Leeds, District Six resident and Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Limerpieda Chapter. We support the staff recommendation to end the Coyote Valley Monterrey Corridor study. Any expanded uses or development in the study area would be incompatible with the ecological importance of Coyote Valley. We're concerned that Climate Smart non-personnel funding has been cut again by hundreds of thousands of dollars. As described earlier, these funds are used for partnerships and grants with community-based organizations. We're concerned that the energy department funding might not be able to be used for these specific purposes, so please either restore this funding and/or ensure that funding from the energy department can be used for this. San Jose overall needs to accelerate its climate action. We also support the public comments to increase funding for legal representation and support for our immigrant communities by $1.5 million. Immigrants are our friends, neighbors, and family, and if they lose their rights, we will all lose our rights as well.
Thank you, next speaker. Dennis Cunningham, Raoul Aldana, John, I already called that person, Adriana Cuvado, Suzie Torres, Bob Siffel, and Glow Sarul. Come on down. Go ahead.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Ligsey, and I am the President of the College Park Neighborhood Association in District Six. I am here to speak in support of the mayor's June budget message. Also, thank you Vice Mayor Foley for supporting this budget. It is imperative that everyone do their part to end the crisis of homelessness, including the very people living on our streets. Building cost-effective shelters and interim housings, as well as requiring that everyone come indoors, is the first step. San Jose is opening over 100, I'm sorry, 1,000 shelters units later this year, and I was promised that my neighborhood would be better off. You need to fulfill your promise by requiring people to use the shelter they've been offered. As a 25-year San Jose resident who cares immensely about ending unsheltered homelessness, I am not just asking, I am urging each and every one of you to vote the mayor's message, budget message in full.
Thank you, next speaker. Before the next speaker speaks, this is my hourly update on how many cards are left. We have 180 cards left to call. Go ahead. I'm not trying to discourage you, I just want people to know. Go ahead, sir.
Are you waiting for me? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't interrupting anybody. My name is Bob Siffel, and I've been a neighborhood leader for over 40 years with daily ties to the Columbus Park area. I do not support arresting all the homeless, however, many of the people do not know that there are many of the homeless are mentally ill, on drugs, and alcohol, and the only way to get them into a program is to help and requires the necessary touch with the police department. The teams designated by the city are fully trained to evaluate these issues, and an arrest is the last thing they want to do, but a refusal could force that. At that point, at least, it gets the person into the system where they can get help and that help is generated. In addition, currently, the waterways of San Jose are contaminated, if not cleared, and the heavy fines will be charged to the city if not done. That means removing the homeless from there, too. Funding has been acquired to turn the Columbus Park area into a grand park. After five or more years of occupation, it's time to remove the unhoused when possible, get them a safe place to move, but it is time for the citizens of this whole area to enjoy that grand.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Adriana. I'm here to express my strong support for the mayor's budget message, especially your responsibility to shelter. This plan represents the kind of urgent compassionate leadership our city needs. I was born and raised in Seven Trees, where drugs and alcohol were normalized in our neighborhood. That was my reality growing up, and that's not the future I want for my children. Today, I'm raising my kids in downtown, and every day as I drive my son to school, we see people in visible crisis, suffering without care or shelter. I've been threatened on my doorstep. A drug-addicted homeless man once peered into my door while my son was in the living room. My car has been vandalized. Our streets and parks feel unsafe. This cannot be our new normal. We need urgent solutions grounded in compassion and accountability, and my kids deserve better.
Thank you, next speaker. John Silva, Chris Patterson Simmons, Melissa Reyes, and Yvette Lobato, come on down.
Hi, my name is Susannah Torres. I'm the owner of Busy Fit Meals located on McKee and King, District Three, and in the last week, I've had two mentally ill unhoused, two fires in my parking lot. I've had the attempt to break my window twice this week after being burglarized twice. They've attempted to go into our businesses demanding free items, barely dressed. We have found bloody needles in our bathroom. This has caused so much difficulty for us as a little businesses. They are all housed near our entrance. We call the police so often just to hear that they don't have enough help. I urge you to support our police department with more budget, and I urge you to support our mayor, Matt Mahan's budget. We really need to save our small businesses in San Jose.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everyone, mayor. My name is Vasundhara Thadimiti. I'm from District and Leadership Coalition, and the president of that, and I'm here to support mayor's Responsibility to Shelter message and June budget message. It's because I want to share the story of Brian. I helped Brian for many years, and he's an elderly gentleman with dementia, living on the streets, and I used to help him because bringing him food and clothes, he reminded me of my father who had Alzheimer's and dementia. And I used to feel so good after giving clothes and food, sometimes socks, blankets, and go home, that I did something great, but then the next day, all of his belongings are gone. And people take always advantage of him because he could barely walk, and he's not on his mind sometimes, and I asked him a lot of times, can you go to shelter? And he always refused because the truth is, he's not able-minded to make those decisions, and his illness...
Thank you, next speaker. Cirillo Frias, Avalino, and Teresa Gonzalez, come on down. Ricky Hobson.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Chris Patterson Simmons, and I am a resident in District Four, but I do have a business here in District Three. This should be a no-brainer, actually, to support the budget that the mayor is requesting. Your pay should be tied to progress. I don't get a raise if I achieve my goals at work, and you shouldn't either. Although I don't work anymore, I run a business, but if I don't do my part, I won't get customers to come in. I want to see the progress of homelessness on and crime and the high cost of living, and until I do, I don't want to get any more pay raises. I wouldn't want that. I wouldn't even want that. As a San Jose resident who cares about accountability and transparency, I'm asking that you vote for the mayor's budget because all of you live here in San Jose, and it affects you as well as it affects us. Thank you.
I'm going to call some more names because I don't see anybody waiting. Sergio Lobato, Anthony Para, Jennifer Salea, Craig Schavantaro, Eric Minaud, Steve Borkenhagen. Yeah, I hear no movement, so I'm just going to keep calling cards. These are all the same handwriting, so I suspect somebody may have turned in a group who didn't show up. Mary Schreiber, Orlana Mejia, Julian Lake, Vijaya Assuri, Tamiko Roast. And we'll go on to the next set. John Scaglioni, Michael Gordon, Doug Goss, Gene Hunt, Anna Russo, Greg Peralta, Kelly Hunt, and I'll go one more, Enrique Navarro Donnalin.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, and rest of the city council. My name is Julian Lake. I'm a Policy Director at the Bay Area Council, which represents businesses here in the Bay Area, and I'm also a San Jose Downtown resident. On behalf of the Bay Area Council, I wanted to express my strong support for adopting the proposed Code of Conduct on encampments and the associated budget actions. For too long, we've accepted that unsheltered homelessness as unavoidable, but we know that it has devastating health and safety consequences, not only for those living outdoors, but for the entire community. This proposed Code of Conduct policy takes a balanced, humane, and necessary step forward. It encourages individuals to accept offers of shelter, increases outreach and coordination across departments, and establishes a neighborhood quality of life unit to ensure health and safety at large encampments. Unsheltered homelessness is both a humanitarian and economic crisis. Thank you for your leadership on this critical issue.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Tamiko Rast, and my family's roots in Japantown go back over 100 years. We've dedicated our lives to this community. My dad has voluntarily swept our streets every day for over 15 years. My mom waters its plants and paints Christmas decorations on everyone's windows. My husband takes care of our trees, and my role with running our farmer's market is completely voluntary. Yet, every member of my family has been assaulted by unhoused individuals suffering from mental illness or addiction. We've stopped a rape, been attacked, had our neighbors' buildings intentionally set fire by squatters, and are constantly verbally harassed. The more we contribute to our community and the more present we are, the greater our risk is of being hurt. My family lived in a garage for three years without heat or hot water, so we empathize with the unhoused, but we are traumatized and being revictimised, and we implore you for your help. Please support the mayor's budget message in full. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, Mayor Mahan and council members. My name is Michael Gordon. I live in District Ten, and my wife, Tricia Mott, and I both run a business in District Ten. I speak in support of the mayor's June budget message, and thank you, Vice Mayor Pam Foley, for your support. The courage to tie your salary to performance is inspiring and shows a high level of commitment. I, too, wake up every day, and if I don't serve my clients and honor my fiduciary duty, I get paid nothing, so I appreciate you honoring your fiduciary duty. Your compassion and dedication to shelter the homeless and provide services is desperately needed, as evidenced by everybody who has spoken before, so I'm not going to repeat those. And what I will say is, we definitely need more teeth for our law enforcement to be able to do their job. I was raised by a police officer who taught me, if you do what they say, you don't get hurt, you don't get jailed, you just have to honor the law and do what is right. So please...
I just want to thank you, sir. I'm sorry about that. I want to remind everybody, it is not okay to disrupt the meeting and interrupt people exercising their First Amendment rights. If people can't handle that, we will pause and we will empty the chamber. Do not interrupt people during their 60 seconds of speech. That is a right everyone in this chamber is entitled to, no matter what side of what opinion you're taking. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Mahan, and thank you all, council members. My name's Gene Hunt, and though I'm no longer a member of District Nine, Vice Mayor Foley's district, I do want to support the mayor's June budget message and appreciate her willingness to back that as well, and I ask that all of you do the same thing. The two issues that I think are most important, you've already heard about here, that's the homelessness issue and the right or the requirement to be housed, and the second one is the accountability. Each of us has to be responsible for our own pay, and I appreciate the fact that you have the opportunity to also do that now, so please vote in favor of the mayor's June budget message, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Mary Schreiber. I am the president with the Goodyear Mastic Neighborhood Association, which is located in District Three, which I also live in, and the vice president with the Alma Neighborhood Association, which is District Seven. I'm here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget message and his push for greater accountability. I also want to thank the Vice Mayor Pam Foley for supporting the message, just like I am. I'm here today because I believe everyone should do their part to end the crisis of homelessness, including the people living on the streets. We need to continue to build cost-effective shelters and permanent housing and require that everyone come indoors. People who repeatedly refuse to come indoors tend to have serious addiction and mental issues, keeping them on the streets. I understand there has been at least 200 of our homeless neighbors die every year, and longer we allow these people to live outside, the worse their health conditions become.
Thank you, that's your time. That's your time. Frank Cancilla, come on down. Karika Rawaf, Lena Nguyen, Cynthia Lee, Lisa Carpentier, Courtney Pharaoh, Hillary Davidson, and Anna, last name starts with A. Come on down.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Greg Peralta, and I'm a...
My name is Greg Peralta, and I'm a resident of District Six, just off the Alameda and West Julian. I want to thank Vice Mayor Pam Foley for supporting this message, just like I am supporting it. I'm here this evening because I believe everyone should do their part to end this crisis here of people living outside, including those people themselves. Many of the people living outside on the streets have mental health challenges. I come into contact with them regularly, given where I live. Roaming the streets, as they do, is not safe for them, nor for me. I used to love to jog on the Guadalupe River Trail from West Julian Street up to the airport. I no longer do, as I don't feel safe there, and it's filthy. I believe the city is doing a good job building cost-effective shelter, and those living outside must do their part to come indoors and accept the housing when it is offered to them. As a local resident who cares about ending this crisis of unsheltered people in San Jose, I'm asking that you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Anna Maria Russo, and I've been a resident of San Jose my whole life. I am here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget message and his push for greater accountability. I believe we should all be accountable for what we do and how we do it. I also want to thank Vice Mayor Pam Foley for supporting the message, just like I am. I'm here today because I believe your pay should be tied to progress. I don't get a raise if I don't achieve my goals at work, and you shouldn't either. I want to see progress on homelessness, crime, and the high cost of living. And until I do, I don't want to get, I don't want you to get any more pay raises. As a San Jose resident who cares about accountability and transparency, I'm asking you that you vote for the mayor's budget message. I love San Jose, and I want to see it get back to what it was.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Enrique Navarro Donilon, Government Affairs Associate with the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. I speak today in support of the mayor's June budget message and his push for greater accountability. I also thank our past association president, Vice Mayor Pam Foley, uh, for supporting the message like I am. I'm here today because I believe that everyone must do their part to end the crisis of homelessness, including the people living on our streets. We need to build cost-effective shelter and require that everyone come indoors. People who repeatedly refuse to come indoors tend to suffer from serious addictions and/or mental health issues that keep them on the streets. Two hundred of our homeless neighbors die every year. And the longer we allow people to live outside, the worse their health conditions become. It is not compassionate to leave people outside to suffer, exposed to the elements, and without access to life-restoring services. We need to bring them indoors and get them into the care of the county's social services. To enable this life-saving mission, I ask that you vote for the mayor's budget message in its entirety.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Correa. I am a student at James Lake. I am here regarding due to the budget cutting of the youth centers. I am a part of the Alum Rock Youth Center. Um, I believe we should get more funding due to some students not feeling safe walking home by themselves. Due to, um, lots of homeless people around the area not feeling comfortable of them running around wherever they feel. Um, also, I feel like we should get more budgets due to, um, us not being able to get, um, much field trips, much activities to do. We used to get, um, paintings. We don't get that anymore due to budget cuts. So I really, um, I'm asking you guys, if you guys could give us more budgets and raise it for our funds. Because we are really depending on your guys' budgets. And due to you guys cutting it, we don't get that much opportunities as we used to get before from last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Kneeka Rawat. I'm a high school senior, a District Four resident, and a member of Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. I urge you to increase or at least preserve Climate Smart's non-personnel funding, this year and every year after. In the past year, this funding has supported the development of the Climate Smart program, updating building reach codes, and educating the community about electrification. This funding is integral for the city to engage with community-based organizations and educate and encourage people to lead climate-friendly lives. This lets residents know that these clean energy programs and rebates actually exist and helps maximize their use, making San Jose a cleaner city as a whole. As a young person facing the daunting impacts of climate change in my future, I want to see that our city remains committed to climate change even as the federal government fails. We have a petition with two hundred plus signatures in support. Please don't let budget cuts stand in the way of a cleaner, safer future for San Jose. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Pharaoh. And until four days ago, I was an animal care attendant at S. Jack's. The shelter is failing, and this is due to a toxic culture at the top. Animals, line-level staff, and the community are being let down. Just Saturday, I witnessed three loose dogs, one visibly injured, wandering into traffic on Monterey Road, just a few minutes down the road from the shelter. I called for animal control's help and waited about twenty minutes before deciding I needed to intervene myself. I brought the injured dog to the shelter, only to find out he had been adopted from there just two days earlier. There was also no vet on site because there are no vets working on the weekend. So I then had to transport this dog, named Knight, to MedVet from the shelter. Another one of the three dogs I spotted was hit by a car and killed later the same day, before animal control came out. Animal control did not respond to my call until the next morning, eighteen hours after my call. This is not a one-off. Animal control is severely understaffed, while shelter management collects six-figure salaries comfortably.
Thank you. Next speaker. Um, I'm going to call, I'm not sure if this card says Lynn or Hyne. It's either H-Y-N-E or L-Y-N-E. Veronica Ariano, Tamara Chavez, and HB. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Chapontier, and I am a voter in District Three. I am a volunteer with Mothers Out Front, and I am here to express my concern about the discontinued funding to the Climate Smart program in the proposed city budget. I urge you to put forward or approve a memo amending the proposed budget to reinstate full non-personnel funding to the Climate Smart program, at least to last year's levels. I care about climate change, and I believe that is one of the most fundamental existential crises of our time. We are already suffering through extreme heat and wildfire threat due to climate change. Worsening climate change will exacerbate other issues, like homelessness, food shortages, and public health. And while these issues are very important to address, they will never fully be solved without combating climate change. Please ensure both personnel and non-personnel funding are preserved and expanded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Lee. I'm a freshman at Homestead High School and a member of Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. My friend Marina thinks the world is going to burn when we grow up. But I know you all have the power to stop that from happening. Please increase the non-personnel funding for the Climate Smart. It has the ability to spark remarkable change through the four targets: renewable electricity, reduced driving, emission-free vehicles, and electrifying appliances. The plan is great, but you must follow through if San Jose wants to reach carbon neutrality by 2030. Now is the time to build momentum and not cut back on it. Please increase the Climate Smart funding and move forward with your hard-earned progress. Make sure the world doesn't burn for my friend Marina and all of us youth that want a great world to live in. Because ignoring the problem will only cost us many more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Hillary, and I'm advocating for better services for the unhoused population. I have been trying to help a friend who is unhoused and has substance abuse issues, and it has been virtually impossible to get help. There aren't shelters available. The people answering the phones don't have enough information. My friend got a referral to a detox center. And even when we followed directions to confirm if the referral was received, the detox center hasn't called back. Furthermore, there are only fifteen beds available at Telecare for the largest city in Northern California. When the Here For You hotline had a space available, but we realized we couldn't get there within an hour, we tried calling the shelter directly, and the phone number didn't work. The list goes on. There needs to be an audit of the services available and their follow-through. There needs to be budget, so there is a case manager for each unhoused person. There needs to be budget for more service hours and compassionate call center representatives.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Lynn. I'm a D-two resident. I've been a cat volunteer for nine years at the Animal Care Center. I'm here to ask you to stop throwing our hard-earned money after bad. After years of raising the alarm, it's clear the suffering at the San Jose Animal Care Center and services is being tolerated, not just by shelter leadership, but by you, our city leaders. This isn't a smear campaign. It's failed leadership at every level. Taxpayer dollars are being wasted on bloated management, failed hiring, and endless meetings with no outcomes. Staff who speak up or silence are pushed out. The audit confirmed what advocates have been saying for years. And now you're rewarding failure with even more funding? Are you kidding me? The public is watching. We remember. We expect accountability and real leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Deanna Chalfant, Diane Foxen, and Natalie Lopez, come on down. Go ahead.
My name is HB, and I'm a resident of District Nine. I'm here to support the mayor's June budget message and to thank my council member, Vice Mayor Pam Foley, for backing it. Thank you, Pam. Years ago, my uncle Art was on the brink of homelessness. I had to have some very hard conversations with him about taking responsibility even while I was helping him. And to his credit, he rose to the occasion. He did his part, and I did mine. If Uncle Art could do it, I think others can too, with the right combination of support and accountability. Everyone deserves a chance to stabilize, get the help they need, and rebuild their lives. That's why I'm asking you to support the mayor's budget message in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm here as the Regional Director of PATH to share our concerns about the proposed code of conduct for encampments. We are firm believers in the idea that no person should be living in an encampment, which is why this proposal is important to get right. The language is vague and the, and the need's further workshopping to preserve the rights of all unhoused individuals. We would encourage the city to work with us and other providers, as well as people with lived experience, to come up with a more comprehensive and compassionate policy. It is important to remember that we have already made inroads on the challenging issue. Since April twenty-fourth, PATH's outreach team has served one thousand seventy-six individuals and housed two hundred and nineteen of them. The major problems we have are not centered around people rejecting shelter options, because the reality is that ninety percent of the individuals we encounter on any given day cannot access shelter. The city has made strides on building out its shelter network, but we can work together to successfully increase prevention efforts, as well as both interim and permanent housing solutions across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Greg Kahn, come on down. Phil H. and Jackie Martin. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name's Deanna Chalfant, and I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and the Hanover Development Team. Um, we would like to show our support for the mayor's June budget message. As councils aware, Hanover has recently broken ground on two projects totaling over seven hundred multifamily units. And we are thrilled to bring the much-needed housing to North San Jose. That said, I want to take this opportunity tonight to make a clear distinction as it relates to housing and approvals. While it's important that the city of San Jose work to approve housing projects, it's even more important that they work to get housing into production. The multifamily incentive program is a wonderful example of this. Without policies in place to help facilitate production, housing will not get built. Housing production will stem from continued policy change, adoption, and implementation. Remember, shovels in the ground equates to heads in.
Thank you. Next speaker. Rebecca Davis Matthews and Kay Blom, come on down. Go ahead.
Mayor Mahan, I appreciate your compassion for unhoused humans and animals alike. I support the mayor's budget to help our unhoused. My name is Diane Foxen. I'm a neonatal ICU spa day, ICU nurse by day, and a foster parent for very sick foster kittens by night. Our city and our nation has a major problem. I have a solution. The problem is thousands of kittens being born and dying in our communities and no place for them to go. San Jose's solution is new management for the San Jose Animal Care Center that will bring back our robust trap neuter return services and low-cost spay-neuter programs for our residents. It's been over five years, and we are still no closer to offering TNR and low-cost spay-neuter services for our community that were once offered before COVID. This is unacceptable. The solution: Stop the births in the field. We will stop overwhelming our shelters during kitten season. The robust community of trappers, of TNR trappers, wants to help, but we cannot without new management team that prioritizes TNR and spay-neuter services for our communities.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jackie Martin, and I'm a member of SURGE Santa Clara County and a voter in District Two. As an educator, I work with students who are unhoused. Mayor Mahan's plan to criminalize homelessness would make it harder for them to finish school, find housing, and to build a future. It's ineffective, inhumane, and a waste of public resources. We also need real support for those facing mental health and substance abuse crises. The trust program offers a safe, effective alternative, especially for people of color and folks with disabilities who are often harmed by default police responses. For the well-being of our community, I urge you, do not implement the so-called responsibility-to-shelter policy. Instead, invest in real public safety by fully funding a twenty-four-seven trust response team and by using Measure E funds for their intended purpose of real affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Uh, hello, council. Uh, I'm Phil. I'm with SURGE Santa Clara County. Um, I'm going to be honest. I'm here because I love San Jose. Um, everyone behind me is here because they love San Jose. And you, in the council, are also here because you also love San Jose. And love for San Jose means love for its people. And unhoused people, and unhoused are people. These people deserve care, and we agree that they need it badly. But this is not the answer. Just listen to these vulnerable people and listen to the facts. They'll tell you incarceration does not work. We need a budget that prioritizes solutions that will actually help, like long-term affordable housing. These people are not asking for more policing and arrests because it does not help. There is nowhere for people to live, and that is the problem. Please don't go through with this proposal. Keep Measure E, protect our immigrants, reject criminalization of homelessness, and fund trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Esmeralda Varelos, Stephanie, and Lori Ketcher, come on down.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Davis Matthews. I'm here on behalf of Sustain Our Shelters. I would like to caution you against giving San Jose Animal Care and Services more money for fewer services. Giving the shelter even a penny more would be unwise when we are more than five years out from the discontinuation of spay and neuter services for the public. TNR services have not come back to full capacity, and an increasing and alarming number of cats and dogs have been dying in the shelter. Please hold shelter management and the medical director accountable by removing those who are not effective. And please require the Public Works Director to come back in September to talk about the audit progress, not December. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Kay Blom, and I live in District One. I'd like to show you this. This poor little thing didn't make it. This was just last month. And if you approve the budget for the shelter, please have accountability. I don't know what they're doing out there, but this isn't right. And this is a direct result of their leadership and incompetence. So, um, another thing, I don't know if you guys know, but San Jose is up to its eyeballs in feral cats and kittens. This kitten season has been awful. And it's just a direct result because of lack of TNR services and low-cost spay and neuter for the general public. I'm out trapping every day, and it's just overwhelming. There is no place for them to go. So, um, anyway, just, I'm asking for accountability, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Emily, come on down, and Gabriel Evans.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Preston. I'm a resident of downtown D-three and a voter and a member of SURGE, showing up for racial justice. I'm here to urge the council to fund trust, to support our immigrant communities, and fund real affordable housing, keeping Measure E funds for what they were intended for. I know people here who fear those living on the streets, but that doesn't make them less human. It doesn't mean they can't make their own decisions, and it doesn't make them criminal. When there are already hundreds waiting for housing, it's outrageous. When there are already hundreds waiting for housing, it's outrageous to think that jailing our unhoused community members will help. Giving them an arrest record will actually impair their ability to get stable housing in the future. Doesn't make sense to fund a team of officers when you could use trust. What we need are longer-term solutions, not quick fixes and spending more money on cops and jails. Instead, I encourage you to fund a San Jose-specific trust team to address mental health and substance use. And to also protect our immigrant community by investing the needed $1.5 million. We must treat each other like humans, humans who are all valuable, no matter what we...
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Esmeralda with Destination Home. We're deeply concerned by the continued shift away from long-term housing solutions, especially the reallocation and Measure E funds. We simply cannot and will not solve homelessness without addressing the broader housing affordability crisis that is actually driving homelessness in our community today, especially in light of cuts to our safety net. Preventing homelessness is one of the most effective, cost-efficient, and humane strategies we have. Our homelessness prevention system has kept thousands of families from falling into homelessness. And yet, the proposed budget cuts $2.3 million from this work. That means 600 fewer people will get the help they need next year. We urge you to support the proposal from Councilmember Campos, Salas, and Doan to increase Measure E...
Thank you, next speaker. Nora Carino, Ross Martinez, Debbie Deguti, and Natalie Corvajal, come on down.
Hi, my name is Lori Ketcher, I'm a 22-year resident and voter in District 6 and a member of SURGE. In a time when the federal government is attacking our immigrant communities, do not follow suit by arresting our most vulnerable residents who deserve dignity, housing, and robust services. I hear people in this room blaming unhoused individuals for increased homelessness, when the reality is decades of not building affordable housing and the ballooning wealth inequality in Santa Clara County where we have no fewer than 14 billionaires. If you are in this room and you have a flushing toilet, a bed, closets for your own junk, and a safe roof over your head, before you speak in support of money for policing homeless people, I ask that you read the extensive research that shows what actually works to end homelessness. It is housing and services. I support Campos, Salas', and Doan's memo to allocate Measure E funds toward prevention, and support Campos's memo to ensure clarity on how policy changes will be implemented before you approve a Code of Conduct. Budget $1.5 million...
Thank you, that's your time.
Dear Mayor Mayhend and Councilmembers, my name is Gabriel Evans, and I'm a representative of CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations. The Trump administration is building a massive deportation force. They're targeting immigrants with no criminal record. ICE is already abusing its power with raids, arrests without evidence, and deportations into dangerous places. San Jose must be ready. Legal aid is one of our best defenses against this. Immigrants with lawyers are over 10 times more likely to win their cases, but our community lacks enough attorneys and outreach resources. We urge you to fully fund the $1.5 million request for immigration services, especially the $1 million that can come from SJPD savings tied to nonessential vacancies. This isn't a cut to safety, this is a reinvestment to real community safety. Protect our families, fund legal aid, and keep San Jose safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name's Emily Hinden, I live in District 6 and I'm a member of SURGE Santa Clara County. I was born and raised in San Jose, I raised my family here. I've also worked for the city, I did work for the city for over 12 years. Very excited by the opportunity to give back to the city that I loved. I've taken great pride in being part of this community where we care for our neighbors and treat each other with respect. But as you have already heard from others over the last few months, the budget you're getting ready to vote on is really a moral document that should reflect our values. So I'm here with a simple request: Approve a budget that is rooted in justice, fairness in the treatment of all. A budget that reflects our collective concern for human dignity, a budget that results in housing and care for our neighbors. These are values that matter to me, to us, and the people who elected you. So do not move forward with the implementation of the so-called "responsibility to shelter" and the criminalization of homelessness. Root cause of homelessness is lack of affordable housing, and not a refusal of shelter.
Thank you, that's your time. Karen Gonzalez, come on down, Amanda Flores, and Eugene Torres.
Good evening, my name is Nora Carino, I'm a sophomore and member of the San Jose Team of Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. I'm here because of the extremely concerning budget cuts proposed to Climate Smart San Jose, and I urge you to increase the budget of Climate Smart to at least $625K in total, maintain or increase staffing for Climate Smart, and establish sufficient and permanent funding for Climate Smart. Climate action is a necessity, especially if San Jose is going to reach its 2030 carbon neutrality goals. So it's time to start following through with your words. We must act now or else climate change will continue to worsen. Investing now will ensure a greater impact, if we wait, it will only get more expensive. San Jose is directly impacted by climate change because we are in a wildlife-prone area and our water supply is stressed due to climate change-induced droughts. Preserving the Climate Smart budget will not make a significant dent to the San Jose budget, but it will have enormous effects, including increased safety, health, and an overall better quality of life. We need Climate Smart to continue community engagement and public outreach that educates youth and increases climate literacy.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Carvajal with Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley, and I'm a District 9 resident. We support the memo from Councilmembers Campos, Salas, and Doan to refocus Measure E funding on prevention, not enforcement. We also support pausing the new Code of Conduct and ordinance changes until there's a thoughtful plan in place. We strongly urge for a $1.5 million commitment for immigration services. As someone from a mixed-status family, I felt real fear in recent weeks. Sanctuary protections that helped us feel a little bit safer are now under threat, and we need to be proactive. Our community needs support right now because we know that what's happening in LA will happen here next. Let's pass a budget that puts community care and not criminalization at the center. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
So on a lighter note, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Debbie Degutis, I am the Managing Director of Christmas in the Park. On behalf of Santa, we want to thank you for the allocation in current budget for our organization. We have a $200,000 deficit coming into this season. This allocation, along with the one from District 3, thank you, will make a huge difference in us producing a valuable and quality product for 700,000 people this year. Just as a reminder, we produce the Holiday Town Square, where each season we create a place where everyone can connect, collaborate, and celebrate. And quite frankly, I think that's needed right now. Our event drives nearly $20 million into the downtown economy. We drive nearly $1 million into the city treasury in the way of city parking fees and taxes. And yet, we still struggle to break even each year. That's why this budget and the allocation is so important to us. Christmas in the Park is San Jose. And on behalf of San...
Thank you, next speaker. Cassandra McConna, come on down, Elizabeth Molina, and Sandy Perry. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, I'm Karen Gonzalez, Director of Partnerships for Latina Coalition. On behalf of Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley, we want to share our sentiment that we do not support the permanent relocation of Measure E funds proposed in the June budget. Voters approved Measure E to build deeply affordable housing, not to plunge our budget gaps and expand enforcement. We oppose the $2.1 million allocated for neighborhood quality of life police unit. The Housing Department Enhanced Engagement Program is better suited for this work without the police force. We support expanding alternative response teams made up of trained service providers and law enforcement are not the appropriate to criminalize people for trying to survive. Finally, I urge you to prioritize funding for our immigrant communities. As a former DACA recipient who got a start as a legislative aide here in this beautiful city, I know we can do better, and I trust that while the federal government has turned its back on the community...
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, Councilmembers, my name is Amanda Flores, D5, resident and community organizer from West Valley Community Services, where I work closely with people who have lived experience with homelessness. I urge you to look beyond the myths. Addiction is not the root cause of homelessness, it's often the result. What we're seeing is the impact of a housing crisis, not its cost. People lose housing due to job loss, domestic violence, system failures, and a lack of affordable homes. The solution is simple: Give people a home, somewhere safe, welcoming, and supportive. Please listen to actual stories, homeless people are your constituents too. Most do not want to live outside, they don't want to abandon their pets, their children, or they feel safer in their cars. I do not doubt the experiences and all the stories and support you've heard tonight, but this is not an effective, long-term way of addressing the housing crisis. We support the EEP and support the Code of Conduct as long as you guys provide the resources like trash cans and restrooms. We're tired, but we're not backing down. We're fighting forward together.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, good evening, Eugene Torres with Family Support of Housing, and a member of the Real Coalition and a resident of D3. This budget needs to prioritize more funding for homelessness prevention in partnership with building of affordable housing now that is actually affordable without all the yellow tape, or available fines that are allowed to cut down how many affordable units a developer has to build. $1.5 million for immigration services to defend families from the inevitable attack coming to San Jose, and full funding of the older adult health and wellness program. We support the revitalization of MACHA as a positive pillar on the east side of San Jose that can help break generational traumas and traps which will give youths a chance at a positive future. The high cost of living causes homelessness, and the manipulation of how Measure E funds have been used and continue to be used makes the problem worse moving forward. Even for those currently in shelter programs receiving the most intensive wraparound support, San Jose housing will be unattainable with qualifications to make 2.5 or three times...
Thank you, that's your time. Next speaker. Laura Vasquez, come on down, Ranga Kay, and Flower.
Hi, everyone, my name is Cassandra Magaña, the Manager of Policy and Advocacy at West Valley Community Services. I come from a family of immigrants, and I've lived through homelessness. And I was never mentally ill or addicted to drugs. I was a college student who fell through the cracks. I'm here because our communities are demanding more than survival. How about a responsibility to care? We support the Campos, Salas, and Doan memo to redirect Measure E funds towards prevention and family homelessness. That's where the real change begins. We reject the use of police enforcement against our unhoused neighbors. Criminalization doesn't solve anything. I strongly support the $1.5 million for our immigrant families. In a city that was built off the back of our immigrants, $500,000 is not nearly enough. Fear has struck our communities, invest in the cultura that makes this city rich, and I support the $500,000 being directed towards MACHA so our youth have a future rooted in opportunity and support. San Jose must choose care over criminalization, investment over displacement, and justice over fear. Fund our people. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Molina, and I'm with Planned Parenthood Marmontay and a member of the Real Coalition. I want to thank the councilmembers up here who have been standing in solidarity. In healthcare, there's a main principle that prevention is the best healthcare, and it highlights the importance of proactive measures, more effective, and it addresses issues before it happens. And that's why I think this exact principle should be applied to all aspects of life. We need to take care of all people, which is why I support Councilmember Campos, Doan, and Salas for the relocation of Measure E funds for preventing family homelessness. Let's not forget that San Jose is ranked #1 for children homeless and youth. So, an additional $1.5 million for immigration services, as promised, $80,000 for interpersonal violence program, and $500,000 for the revitalization of MACHA, which I also credit of keeping me off the streets as a youth when I needed their services at the time. So let's take care of all San Jose, acknowledge that this is a housing crisis.
Thank you, next speaker. Camille Claudio, and Debbie Owl, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Sandy Perry, a District 3 resident. I reject the responsibility to shelter. I call for using Measure E funds for permanent housing and prevention, as well as interim shelter, and for the $1.5 million for immigrant services. As we speak, the city of San Jose is in danger of adopting the Trump administration policy that the solution to every problem is to get rid of human beings. This proposed budget is inconsistent with the ideals and values of the San Jose my wife and I and my family have lived in since 1990. The people of San Jose believe housing and healthcare are human rights, not privileges for the wealthy. We believe in accountability, not just for the poor, but for billionaires. If the tech billionaires paid their fair share of taxes, we'd have plenty of money to guarantee housing for every man, woman, and child in our city, the way we were able to do back in the 1960s and 1970s. We believe in unity and...
Thank you, that's your time. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Mayhend and the council. I'm Ranga Krishnan, I'm a resident of District 9. I own a technology company there. And I'm a naturalized US citizen, and I want to speak up for our undocumented people in San Jose, and also all immigrants. So I urge you to support the $1.5 million in immigration services for that. I was very glad to hear our governor say today, "Arrest me," in regards to defending the people of California. I would like to think that all of you would also say that on our behalf. And that, I think, is what is needed, not more police to incarcerate people who are dealing with the challenge of homelessness. So, I do not support the permanent reallocation of scheduled E funds for...
Thank you, next speaker. Lynn Morrison, come on down, and Carly Peach. Go ahead.
As somebody who has survived homelessness, who was born into it and grew up in it, who has been to shelters and has watched their mother sell her body just to feed her child, Matt Mahan, you don't speak for us. This budget is a thinly veiled attempt to appear productive. Matt Mahan, you are out of touch with reality, which is to be expected of a man who has never struggled to find food or warmth. I don't see you down at the soup kitchen or at mutual aid meetings. Mahan does not care about us. Trump is attacking vulnerable people to create economic chaos he can profit off of, and Mahan wants a piece of that action, because that is all he cares about: Money, appearances, and his own ignorant comfort. Shame on you, Mahan. If this council refuses to be just, we have no peace left to give, no justice, no peace.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Debbie Owl, and I live in District 7, and I'm a member of SURGE, you can see on my shirt here. I have three things I'd like to say. Number one, don't use Measure E funds exclusively for temporary housing, as the recognized answer to homelessness is affordable housing. Also, I'd like you to fully fund trust, I think it's the best solution to people who are having mental illness problems. And then, I'd like you to reject the "responsibility to shelter" policy. And I've communicated with Mayor Mayhend's office, and also I've asked questions of Pam Foley and Bian Don, and I haven't gotten answers. And this is what I'm gonna read from, I got not much, but "Santa Clara County officials and former judge have pushed back on the plan that citing homeless people for trespassing will get connected to the county's behavioral health court and into treatment." It won't happen.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Camille Claudio, I am a resident and an employee in District 5. I facilitate the teen center drop-in program at the Alum Rock Youth Center, which is currently a reduction item in the proposed operating budget, along with the drop-in teen centers at the Alviso and Berryessa Youth Centers. These drop-in teen centers provide a safe space for youth in our communities to enjoy a place for them outside of school and outside of the house. Our youth know our program is a place for them to have fun, try new things, work on schoolwork, or just relax after their long days of class. Many of our participants have found our program because their friends currently enrolled invited them to come, which to me is a testament of what these drop-in programs mean to our youth. I encourage keeping the drop-in teen center programs at these youth centers open, especially considering the school closures in the Alum Rock and Berryessa Union School Districts. Our program is open to ages 12 to 17, and with middle school students trans... and with middle school students transitioning to other schools in the community, these schools will need the support of out-of-school programming to alleviate the pressures of increased enrollment. Providing more resources, not less, to our youth and families is what makes communities safe and thriving.
Thank you, that's your time. Catherine Davis, Kayla Cavalier, and David Burrows, come on down. Go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Carly Peach. I'm a member of SURGE and faculty member at San Jose State. Once a month, I also go to the County Reentry Center with other members of SURGE to spread information on trust. Every formerly incarcerated person I've spoken with is in support of trust, especially its non-police approach. Your continued financial support of trust, and especially a dedicated 24/7 team is essential. Just Friday, I called Trust to encounter a 50, five-zero-minute wait time. We need more funds for these services, and not on the completely antithetical special police unit to arrest unhoused folks. Please spend Measure E funds on long-term, deeply affordable housing and services-first outreach to folks on the street before choosing a cruel and unethical solution.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Morrison, and I am a member of SURGE, and I'm also a resident of District 3. I want to address my remarks today to our District 3 Representative, Mr. Salas. The election for the D3 seat has shown a clear majority of voters in D3 are against the responsibility to shelter proposal. The two candidates who received the most votes are both against this position. I am asking that you represent your constituents, not the mayor and council who appointed you, and vote no on the responsibility for shelter. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tina Morrell. I live in District 3, and I support the mayor's budget message, and I'm asking that you do as well in full. One component that makes a lot of sense is the performance accountability component. Just as my job requires me to meet my goals, so too should your pay and the city departments, department heads' pay be tied to their performance. Can you all imagine the look on voters' faces if you, the council, had told voters during your campaigns, "Oh, well, I'm not gonna hold myself or the department heads accountable for results. I just want to be elected." Accountability is sorely needed, and pay for performance makes logical and good sense. So I ask you to vote for the mayor's budget message in full. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, Mayor Mahan. My name is Mayor Catherine Davis from Columbus Park. On July 28th, you have us all moving out of the park. We have nowhere to go. There's no shelter, there's no beds. We need help. Why don't you open up interim housing? You have three hotels down on First Street that are vacant, that are, nobody's in there. We need somewhere to go. Where are we gonna go? We have RVs, we have cars. I have people that are working full-time out there. We are all scared. We don't know where we're gonna go. We, I, I asked for garbage can dumpsters months ago. I have not received it. The water ha, has not been turned back on. The city has not cut the grass. The grass out there is so high. Yeah, we did have a fire, uh, week and a half ago. The fire department did not come out for 15 to 20 minutes. Okay? And then we called...
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Pon... I'd like to call Poncho Guavera, Zochi Guavera, and Milton Cadenah. Come on down.
Good evening, my name is Kayla, and I'm a resident of D5 and a member of SURGE. Uh, first, I wanted to start by saying I support the 1.5 million for legal services for our immigrant community. Folks deserve due process, and ICE is truly out of order. Next, I ask to keep Measure E funding for permanent affordable housing and homelessness prevention. Please don't support the responsibility to shelter policy. This is a waste of resources. We should fund permanent housing, not handcuffs. I support keeping drop-in teen programs at Alum Rock, Alviso, and Berryessa Youth Centers. Lastly, fund a 24/7 trust team. The right responders will offer public safety for all. We are a community, and we should consider how we would want to be treated when we are in distress. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Um, I'd like to update you that there are 133 cards left.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, my name is Eric, and I'm a resident and homeowner in D3. I've lived in San Jose pretty much my whole life. Uh, I strongly support the mayor's budget plan on homelessness. It expands the interim housing and safe sleeps, sleeping sites to get people off the streets now, while continuing to invest in, uh, permanent housing. It's time to get unhoused individuals the help they need now, not years from now. But if someone refuses help and chooses to remain in public spaces, San Jose cannot be the city that tolerates that. On city salaries, I fully support the mayor's stance: raises should be earned through results, not handed out automatically, just like any private sector job. Keep in mind, we want you to do well and do good things. Continue and improve help, uh, continue and improve to help for families affected by ICE, and please, please, provide animal, the animal shelter, everything they, everything you can. Uh, they need all the help they can get. Though, the folks in charge of the animal shelter should step aside and get real leaders in the door. Let me know where I could send my resume. Uh, it's clear we need...
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Swachikavara, and I'm here, uh, speaking on a variety of different issues, but largely, um, about the issue of criminalizing homelessness. Um, increasing the policing and criminalization of marginalized communities doesn't help them. This is not a solution. This is not something that is going to help. Ultimately, all it does is cause further harm. Uh, I want to also point out that, um, it is Pride Month. We have the flags outside, but especially, it's important to note that one in 30 LGBTQ, or one in 30 youth are, uh, unhoused, and one in 10, uh, young adults are unhoused. And a large portion of them are LGBTQ due to a lot of the issues that surround this. That's much further than simply what we see now. And ultimately, reallocating Measure E funds is not something that also should be included. Thank you.
Buenas noches. My name is Poncho Guavera, and I am a, I'm here representing Sacred Heart Community Service, the Real Coalition, and a really proud dad. This is a devastating day. We just heard that the, that whoever's in charge is sending 700 Marines to attack people that are actually standing up for the rights of immigrants. Uh, today, it was so scary that we had about half the number of people that normally come to Sacred Heart to receive basic services because they're in terror right now. So much fear, division, political blubviation guiding our politics. I believe our community is better than this. Othering unhoused residents while policing, or plowing more resources into policing, uh, when we don't have adequate resources to actually house people or provide service to them, is not a solution. Investing in homelessness prevention and permanent housing is. We support Councilmember Campos's memo to develop a better plan of action, and, um, and the memo from members, uh, Doan, Campos, and Salas to invest in more prevention. And critically, the, the need for investment in real solutions, uh, to, uh...
Thank you, next speaker. Juan Martinez, Tyler Kent, Michelle Martinez, Melissa Reyes, Fred Buzo, and Sandra Asher. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mahan and City Council. My name is Irene from the McLaughlin Corridor Neighborhood Association in D7. I am here to ask for your full support of the mayor's June budget message, and to push to end homeless on our streets and creek beds. Our neighborhood has been deeply affected with the unhoused from the Coyote Creek. This is heartbreaking and, at the same time, dangerous. Um, the unhoused have ravaged by addiction and living in squalor. We have fires daily, cables from poles tapped in for their use, not to mention the trash and pollution along our waterways. And our Coyote Creek is not safe any longer to be able to, um, take our children or grandchildren for a walk. Um, Tully Library has become a very unsafe and dangerous area, attracting many unhoused that need medical and mental, um, facilities.
Thank you, next speaker.
Um, hello, my name is Tyler Kent. I'm here in support of Matt Mahan's, uh, call to responsibility of housing. I'm here to support that because, a few weeks ago, I was attacked by a homeless man right outside my home at a local bakery that I go to every week on Fridays with my family just to get a little snack before school. While there, I was attacked by a man, a grown man. I couldn't defend myself in any way. Um, this man was then on the streets right afterwards, where he then assaulted my father. And after that, God knows what happened. Um, right now, we are working on getting that man finished, but I want all people to get help, and all unhoused people to get help, and that's really what I'm fighting for because I can't go to school, I don't sleep well at night, knowing that there's people on the streets just like that. Just yesterday, I was at the mall with my family eating a meal, and another man attacked another couple. He threw food at random people for no reason. These people need help, and I believe Matt Mahan...
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Michelle Martinez, and I'm a resident at Alum Rock. As many of you know, you heard from my son just now, he was attacked on his way to school, um, by an unhoused individual. 24 hours later, that man was on our streets again. We're working right now to get our justice. But it's, it's really important that you all pass the initiative, the responsibility to house because my kids' lives changed in an instant. You don't understand it until it affects your family. Until it affects you directly, you will never get it. And if you don't support this, I implore you to have, what would happen? What would you do if this was your child? Would you allow this to continue, or would you try and change? This, this has to change.
Thank you, next speaker. Mackenzie Kuschmal and Morgan Heller, come on down.
It will be ignorant to believe that all unhoused people are violent, just like the unhoused person who cowardly hit my son in his face, attacked my family, and spit on my face. I will, I will be ignorant to think that unhoused people are living on the streets because they choose to. I will be ignorant and dishonest because I was an unhoused person myself, so Mahan speaks for me. He can speak for me because I, I was that person. However, when I was a homeless person, I did not hurt people, I did not violate other people's civil liberties, and nor disturb their peace. Today, I stand behind the man who I believe is doing the right thing for my family and for all of us. I stand behind the man who wants to give unhoused people a second or a third opportunity to turn the life around. I support Matt Mahan.
Thank you, that's your time. Next speaker.
Good evening, Sandra Asher. I live in Almeden. I'm with the Real Coalition and SURGE. Budgets reflect our values. We all want to prevent violence, reduce homelessness, and implement changes that truly work. You can do this by supporting the memo from Campos, Salas, and Doan that reallocate Measure E funds towards prevention so fewer families become unhoused. Back Campos's memo to ensure there's a clear, equitable implementation plan before adopting the Code of Conduct. The city's equity standards require you to consider impacts to Black and disabled residents who are overrepresented among the unhoused. How will reasonable accommodations be handled? And how will staff and police be trained on disability rights, ADA accommodations, and due process? And speaking of the ADA, it's a disgrace that you are funding loss, uh, complaints, supporting businesses...
Thank you, that's your time. Gail Boesch, Caliban Boesch, Brian Diggs, or Duggis, and Richard Hobbs, come on down. Go ahead.
I oppose the mayor's pay-for-performance plan. I want accountability from elected officials, but this plan sets a dangerous and undemocratic precedent wherein the council starts to work for and report to the mayor, which they do not by design. The mayor's office has a lot of authority, but not all of it. You publish these scorecards as if you put these council members on a pip, but you're a mayor, not a CEO. You're in government now, not in mergers and acquisitions. This council represents us and works for us. We hold them accountable in our neighborhood meetings, here in this room, and ultimately, again, in November. To suggest that Americans slash their pay when they don't meet mayoral benchmarks is inherently undemocratic and a dangerous precedent. Now, more than ever, we can see how important it is to uphold the checks and balances of government.
Thank you, next speaker. Elizabeth Briarly, Briarly, and Erica Villa, and Samina Usman, come on down.
Hi, I'm Coley Bosch. I'm a longtime resident of D6. I'm deeply concerned about the mayor's budget. I oppose the reallocating of Measure E funding. We need permanent housing. I do support the allocating of one and a half million dollars to support our immigrant communities with legal services, services that helped me when I immigrated. I also support increasing climate smart funding to at least the 20, 22, 23 funding levels more will be desired. We can move slow in some areas, but not in addressing the climate crisis. I oppose the 2.1 million dollars allocating for police force team to encourage, uh, with, engage with the unhoused. Instead, I support alternative programs such as trained social work professionals to engage with the unhoused. The Trust Respond team is an excellent example. Fund it fully. I'm originally from Switzerland. With the poor state of this city, you all would be fired. In too many ways, the city resembles a developing country, but we are one of the...
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Richard Hobbs, D5, immigration attorney, founder of Human Agenda, and a coordinator of the Solidarity and Unity Network, 24 organizations that are working to oppose Trump policies and create new systems that meet the needs of the people. In my 35 years as an immigration attorney at the county, Catholic Charities, Siren, the Rapid Response Network, and Human Agenda, I have never seen this level of fear and trauma in the immigrant community. The tactics used in LA have changed everything. Before, immigrants with arrests or deportations were the target. Now, we need education and protection for every immigrant, workplace, business, school, hospital, and church. We need the full 1.5 million dollars to protect immigrants, avoid ICE and National Guard brutality, and provide legal representation for all immigrants. Thank you.
Um, bef, before you speak, I'd like to call Raymond G., Sally Lieber, Joanne with Breathe California, and Annette Dow. Come on down. Go ahead.
Elizabeth Briarly, San Jose resident and Silicon Valley Taxpayers Association Board Member. Mayor Mahan campaigned successfully on government should focus on the basics. That was the right theme then and now. Council, as our elected reps, you swore an oath to protect residents' rights not to hike spending of taxpayers' earnings to fulfill every conceivable service. Example, as city auditors found in their audit of the Animal Care Center, management direction has morphed from protecting residents by preventing excl, exploding population of wild kittens to taking extreme measures to keep every feral cat alive, while eliciting 17 million dollars, nearly double its pre-COVID budget. With cars, we all keep costs down better through preventive maintenance. At the animal center, that means restoring the preventive trap neuter release program, slashing the budget...
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Samina Usman, and I'm speaking on behalf of Secure Justice, and I'm also part of the Real Coalition. I'm urging you to lead with compassion, not with punishment. Fund eviction prevention so families aren't pushed into the streets. Reject the plan to expand policing of our unhoused neighbors. Criminalizing poverty doesn't solve homelessness. It deepens trauma and injustice. Instead, invest in what actually works: stable housing, safe parking, mental health care, and violence prevention that comes from our communities, not... not at their expense. Protect immigrant neighbors who live in fear by ICE, from ICE, by funding legal services. Restore support for our elders who deserve to age with dignity. Keep your promises on racial equity by protecting the staff whose work holds the city accountable. And invest in our children through affordable childcare and the revitalization of the youth center in East San Jose.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. Kathy Mattingly, come on down. Lori and Mimi, come on down. Go ahead.
My name is Raymond Gones. I'm with Silicon Valley debug. I am also a member of Afro Uprise. I am also formerly incarcerated and from May 2024 until February 2025, I was homeless, sleeping in my car. I was offered housing options like shelters and other things. I refused it. One, because I didn't want to get rid of my dog, and two, because I'm formerly incarcerated and I spent my life in a cell. And there's no way that I could have been housed in a shelter without triggering my PTSD. I wouldn't have felt safe sleeping in a shelter. I speak to women who are formerly incarcerated, and they didn't feel safe with sleeping in the shelter because they feared being raped and being discriminated against because they're a woman. Forcing people and arresting people because they forced your housing options that you feel and you think is cool is not the answer to the question. What you're doing is continuing the massive incarceration. What you're doing is marginalizing people and using your power over people to arrest people. What you're doing is not what's best for San Jose. It's best for you and the 1%. What you're doing is wrong.
Thank... Before you speak, I'd like to call a few more names. I don't know if people heard me the last time because there were a lot of people cheering. So I have Kathy Mattingly I had called and Lori. Amy Cody, come on down. Dilza G., Kathy F., Tamara M., and Denise Morris, come on down. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sally Lieber. I currently and previously have represented San Jose at the state level. I currently represent the entirety of Santa Clara County as well as 18 other counties. I wanted to offer my support for retaining Measure E funds for permanent housing and for prevention. That's what they were intended to be for. For funding for services for our undocumented community members, now more than ever, it is needed for so many obvious reasons. I'd like to request that you also fully fund the trust program, which has the best possibility of success with our community members. And I'd like to ask that you reject the responsibility to shelter. This is a strategy that has never worked in any jurisdiction.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. I'm Garcia Lusso. I'm an allergist pulmonologist who's a member of Breathe California. Breathe California, as you know, is our local lung health leader and has been so for 114 years. We have paired with the city of San Jose to provide services for our senior citizens. And we do home health education. We do health screenings. We provide fall assessments in their home, air quality in their home, et cetera. Plus, we serve 21 senior centers in this city. We have 21 senior centers and we have 1,000 people right now, 1,497 people who are attending our programs and working with us. We must preserve and accumulate and foster this health system in San Jose. And therefore, I plead with you to kindly restore the funds. We've got a service that's available.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Lori. I'm a San Jose native. I was born in San Jose Hospital on East Santa Clara Street. You probably don't even know that that was a thing, some of you. And I have extreme anxiety speaking in public, but I'm here today because it hurts my heart to know that unhoused people may be locked up. I reject the responsibility to shelter. I support the $1.5 million to help, you know, our neighbors who are afraid to go to the grocery store. I hope to keep all Measure E funds as proposed. I support the encampment Code of Conduct as long as there are provided trash bins, bathrooms, and showers. I oppose the $2.1 million neighborhood quality of life.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there, mayor. Hi, city council members. My name is Mimi Spreadberry and I live in District 4. I'm strongly opposed to the mayor's housing plan. I have lived in a European city that had 20% municipal housing stock. To solve the housing issue, create permanent housing. Use Measure E to fund for permanent housing. Secondly, as a 2018 San Jose flooding evacuee when I lived downtown, I strongly support the staff recommendation to end the Coyote Valley Monterey Quarter Study. It has become clear during the years of the study that ending any expanded uses along the Monterey Road in Coyote Valley would be inconsistent with the requirements of the general plan. Finally, I support the $1.5 million for immigrant legal services. Immigrants are currently targeted and experiencing extreme violence that I never thought I would see in my lifetime. I have a parent that lived through World War II in Europe. How many more innocent people in San Jose are going to get arrested, deported?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Mattingly. When I spoke to you before on this same subject, I indicated that it was ridiculous to be wasting money and police time doing a job that only damages people, only makes it more difficult for them to get a job because they now have an arrest record, make it more difficult for them to get into housing because their landlords don't want people who've had arrest records. And now I see the number, $2.1 million for increased police services? If you're looking for ways to fill some of those other places, there it is.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Dilza Gonzalez. I'm with Secret Heart, a member of Real Coalition and a resident in District 4. I'm strongly support the memo from council members Campos, Salas, and Doan to relocate Measure E funding. Do you want real solutions? Create permanent solutions, affordable housing, rent control, other solutions, not incarceration. I'm also here supporting Amigos de Guadalupe on asking for $1.5 million for immigration legal services. ICE activity is increasing and San Jose must be ready. I also here in support for the $500,000 rehabilitation of MACSA, a vital resource for communities and community leaders and youth like myself. I'm urging you to do the right thing and stand with our community. Stop the discrimination and incarceration. Do your job and protect us. Let's build a budget that centers equity and truly serves the people in San Jose with real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Tamara Magtoto and I come here today as a person who has lived in San Jose my entire life, who plans to live in San Jose my entire life, who plans to work in San Jose my entire life, and also a formerly unhoused individual. I am here to express the opposition of the $2.1 million neighborhood quality of life police unit. The Housing Department's enhanced engagement program is better suited to do this work without police. We support alternative response teams made up of mental health staff, social workers, and trained providers without police involvement. We do not support updating trespassing laws that criminalize survival and push people into jail instead of services. I strongly encourage all of the members in this room today to approach all residents of San Jose with patience and compassion whether they're housed and unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Amy Cody and I'm here to support the mayor's June budget message and our city's continued focus on homelessness, crime, and blight. Ending homelessness is a monumental challenge, but we're on the right track with a multi-pronged approach, working across agencies and with multiple partners to achieve measurable results. We must prioritize prevention, emergency shelter, and stabilization, supportive services, and development of permanent, deeply affordable housing. At the Neighborhoods Forum, we learned about the city's strategic efforts to address unsheltered homelessness and related environmental, health, and safety issues. The vice mayor was right on. The city needs to work early and collaboratively with neighborhoods. All parts of the city should contribute, and compassion and accountability are needed to strengthen and improve our city. Thank you all for your service and to everyone who took the time to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd like to call Sid Lolli Martinez, Fernando V., Genesis T., and Cara Ramirez. Come on down. Go ahead.
Mayor Mahan, city council members, thank you for listening to all of us. My name is Kathy Early and I live in District 4. The responsibility to shelter proposal doesn't make sense. We have laws on the books for people who are a danger to themselves and others. Starting fires is a crime. You can arrest people for that, right? So it just doesn't make sense. We had a homeless person up here saying that they needed a dumpster. We need to build a sense of community with the homeless. This is a huge problem that, as you know, is not going away anytime soon. It may get worse because there are problems upstream. So to work...
Thank you. That's your time.
I'm here to replace Denise Morris. Hi. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Christina Bowie. I am the chair of Tulley Road East Church Business Association and a small business owner in San Jose. Thank you for your time and your leadership. I'm here to speak in favor of responsibility to shelter. It's an approach by Mayor Mahan's budget memo that I truly agree with. Small businesses have been the front lines of this crisis, facing safety concerns, property damage, and reduced foot traffic as we try to operate alongside visible and growing street level, you know, suffering caused by untreated mental illness and addiction. This approach brings structure, accountability, and care. It offers a path toward safer streets, stronger commercial corridors, so our local businesses can thrive and neighborhoods can rebuild trust. We need more than compassion. We need coordination and results. And the responsibility to shelter...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Genesis Tejada. I am going to present a poem that I wrote and I'm supporting the mass and proportion of the youth department. Coming into this country has really been hard for me, my siblings, and my mom. I've seen so many teachers come up and tell me, "Speak English," or in stores, tell me, "Why do you take things?" But why? Why would you? You can't understand that I can't speak English. Or why would you think I would steal something? Even in stores, people think I can't pay for stuff or they'll think I just play with EBT all the time. But why? A lot of us have good jobs and yet we still get overlooked by everybody. A lot of Latinos have good jobs and we still get overlooked. But why is that? It's because of our skin tone, the way we talk, the way we dress. What is it? That's just not fair because we're not a problem. We never were a problem. A lot of people think we're a problem, but there's no proof. This was stolen country too. And I will forever say parrot to my people.
My name is Fernando Ramirez with Somos Mayfair Cisepueta Collective and Youth Building Coalition. We strongly support the manager's budget addendum focused on youth development, especially MBA number 17 for MACSA's funding. For the past few nine years, MACSA has been closed, and before that, it has served as a community hub for children and families. Though a lot of damage has been done, MACSA is more than just a building. It is an important community asset and a piece of history here in San Jose, vital to those in the East San Jose community. We can reopen it with your help and investment. And if we do that, it can continue to be used for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yuneri Ramon Reyes, Ashley Guerrero, Victor Vasquez, and Marvin Hernandez Flores, come on down.
Hello, mayor and council members. I am Cara Ramirez. I'm a resident in District 6 and District 8. I'm a rising senior at Abraham Lincoln High School, a joven at Somos Mayfair, and a part of the District 8 Youth Council Committee. I am here with Somos Cisepueta Collective and the Youth Building Coalition. I strongly support the mayor's budget addendum focused on the youth development, especially MBA number 17 for MACSA funding. I believe it is truly important to reopen MACSA because of how it will impact the children in the area. Kids deserve to have somewhere to play sports, learn new things, and even have somewhere to go if they're bored. The space in itself is enormous and there are so many opportunities that could come from reopening MACSA. Reopening it can help the youth in the community grow up to have a big brighter future. I urge you to please help fund more money for the future of MACSA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Xiao Ming Liu, Ray Sundby, Elizabeth Aggermont, and...
Hello, my name is Yuneri Ramon Reyes. I am a rising senior at Cristo Rey High School member of San Jose District 5 Youth Advisor Council and a Hovenes Actiwas member. I am here with Somos Mayfair Cisepueta Collective and Youth Building Coalition to support MBA's focus on youth development, especially MBA 17 for MACSA funding. Reopening MACSA will bring opportunities to Latino youth for a better future and supportive community, having access to sports, a place to study, and many other extracurriculars more than just having fun. It's about our well-being and our future. Stand with our youth. I am here to support Amigos de Guadalupe requests for $1.5 million for illegal immigration services. It's heartbreaking to see the separation of hardworking families in Los Angeles. I am scared for my entire community. We are not criminals. The $1.5 million for immigration legal services will keep our families together here in San Jose. I urge the city council to not support the mayor's responsibility to shelter policy. Yes, we need solutions to the homeless issue in San Jose, but mass incarceration and criminalization of homeless people is not humane or effective solution.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. My name is Ashley Geretl, District 3 resident, organizer with Somos Mayfair and the Hovenes Actiwas Program Coordinator. I'm here today representing Somos Mayfair, the Cisepueta Collective, and the Youth Building Peace Coalition. First, I want to thank the Housing Department for finding $500,000 in Community Development Block Grants funding for MACSA Youth Center improvements such as reflected in MBA 17. As the future of these funds remain uncertain, we must continue these conversations to ensure long-term investment in spaces like MACSA, which keep youth off the streets, out of jail, and connected to schools and mentors. With that, we must acknowledge the harsh realities our families are facing right now. With children being separated from their families by ICE and families at risk of eviction due to the high cost of living, who will these services support? The city council's budget must reflect investment to the same communities the city prides itself to represent. I urge the city council to support Councilmember Ortiz's proposed budget memo addendum to prevent families from being torn apart.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, mayor and council members. I want to say that Genesis Tejada, the poet who just went up, was one of my students as I've been conducting poetry workshops here in the east side. And I can say truthfully and honestly that firsthand, I've seen how many of these youth understand how our lives are politicized and you don't even really need to facilitate that space for them to start speaking out for their community. And I hope we really honor that space. And I also want to say, as someone who's been also blessed to represent the South Bay area on a national scale with poetry, we are missing within that space, which is why I've learned as I've been working within schools that it's not that simple to get involved as a community member to provide that nurturing space for young voices. So that proves the significance of MACSA because not only is it providing resources for our community that have been systematically targeted for generations, it is also... community that have been systematically targeted for generations, it is also of most importance because of what's happening in L.A. And I know we do not need to see that here in the streets of San Jose for us to finally take action and show tangible change.
Thank you. Next speaker. Kaylee Fan, come on down. John Froggett, Vicenta Mayola, and Maria Teresa Barquenos. Go ahead.
Victor Vasquez, Somos Mayfair Cisepueta Youth Building Peace Coalition. We urge you to support MBA Seventeen to reopen Moxa Youth Center, a safe space rooted in culture or language and well-being. We support the MBAs Fifteen, Seven, Five, and MBA Eight in the Rapid Response Funding Request. I work with Inis San Jose, and I see what our young people are up against: the arrest, the depression, displacement, hopelessness, and violence. There's evidence. Latino youth make 25% of the population, but 65% of the arrests. Half of Latino adults experience four or more adverse childhood events before turning eighteen. Half, or 50% of Latinos face the threat of displacement. Fentanyl deaths in our community have more than doubled. These are the government-created conditions that lead to homelessness, addiction, violence, and death. If we're in a criminal court in this city, we'll be guilty as charged of failing our youth. We can change this reality. The city of San Jose-
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Ray Sundby. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on Climate Smart. I strongly support electrifying homes and other buildings and businesses. I strongly support electric vehicles. In addition to being a full-time worker in tech, I'm also an activist working to actually solve climate change. It's not only important that we support climate work, but we need to support the right things. I have no support for anything related to unreliable intermittent renewable energy. I do support clean, safe, reliable nuclear energy. Renewable energy has a very low return on the energy invested to mine, refine, and manufacture. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth, D-Three resident, member of Urge and Afro Uprise. Is it just me, or am I continuously hearing that the police do not keep us safe, either housed and especially not the unhoused? So why do we keep on giving them the largest piece of our budget pie, nearly half a billion dollars? Why don't we invest more in affordable housing, defeat Measure E funding for permanent supportive housing, fund homeless prevention, not giving the police 2.3 million for additional unit when they said that they are overworked and not equipped to handle severe crises of mental health and substance use? Black people represent approximately 2.35%, but 19% of the unhoused population. Furthermore, black people are disproportionately systematically targeted, harassed, victims with excessive force, and murdered by the police. The unhoused population has consistently negative interactions with the police officers. Police presence will only further traumatize folks. Fund Moxa 500K, 1.5 million for Rapid Response Team, and fund Trust 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Wait before you speak. Elizabeth Kamya, come on down. Paco Vargas. I can't pronounce that, or I can't read it. It looks like it says Jermaine Gonzalez, Julia, or Julie Meyerson, and Greg. Go ahead.
My name is Kaylee. I'm from District Four, and I'm an upcoming sophomore in high school, and I'm here to speak on the Bay Area Youth Center closing down. My parents are immigrants from Vietnam, and we're living paycheck to paycheck. I love to play volleyball, but my parents can't afford much. BYC has brought so many opportunities for me. I've made so many friends throughout the past four years who are in similar financial situations as me, and I overcame my social anxiety that I faced since childhood. And through BYC, I've grown in skills too, and I became captain of my school's volleyball team as a freshman. BYC is a safe place, not just for me, but for other kids I know, and has been a way for me and my peers to experience things we never would have been able to experience due to our financial situation. BYC is a community with over 100 people present to better themselves and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm a housing attorney from the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. I'd like to reiterate what we wrote to you in our letter regarding the budget to take an evidence-based approach to homelessness. There are decades of research and data that show that the solution to homelessness is permanent affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. Studies also show that the criminalization of homelessness is more expensive than providing housing and does not reduce homelessness, but can actually increase it. I'd like to also highlight that criminalizing homelessness may also violate the constitutional rights of San Jose residents under the Fourth, Eighth, and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution and Article One of the Constitution of California. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Kamya. I'm a law student at Santa Clara University and a summer law clerk at the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. I'm outraged by how San Jose continues to treat its unhoused residents. Forcibly removing people from encampments, criminalizing poverty, and diverting Measure E funds away from affordable housing is not leadership, it's cruelty. Right now, over thousands of San Jose residents are waiting for affordable housing. Meanwhile, the city continues to fund enforcement-heavy strategies that fail time and time again. Only one in four people exiting shelter transition into permanent housing. Most return to the streets rebuilding encampments because they have no real options. This is a vicious, expensive, and traumatizing cycle. Yes, shelter can be part of the solution, but only if it's voluntary, dignified, and a bridge to real housing. We must stop using temporary shelter as an excuse to punish those who remain unsheltered. Let's be honest, this crisis did not start with the unhoused. It started with a system that prioritizes politics over people, punishment over policy, and ambition over accountability.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Tianwen. I am here today to support Mayor Mahan's budget message. I believe it is the best way, the best solution to solve our city homeless crisis. Mayor Mahan, you may not perfect, but with me, with our committee, you did good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Kelly McCurley, Celine Din Janelle, and Allegra, come on down.
Good evening. My name is Paco Lozua Coyotin Vargas. I'm a three, D-Three resident of 30 years. I believe that we should allocate 1.5 million to immigrant defense. Every city in the county pulled together weight to contribute resources, leadership to protect our communities. Law enforcement reaffirms they won't cooperate with ICE. Law enforcement reaffirm they won't use violence against those who protect our community members. And I demand that we have our congressional representatives to conduct hearings over the heinous activities of ICE. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Greg Miller, and I live in District Five. I support using most of the Measure E funds for affordable housing. Sweeping encampments and forcing people into temporary shelter beds again and again is no real solution. Rents are too damn high. Speculation by landlords should not take precedence over everybody's need for decent long-term housing. A couple of years ago, this council committed to prioritize affordable housing preservation. The mayor is fond of saying that affordable housing is too expensive, costing $1 million per unit. But the truth is that renovating existing affordable housing costs about $200,000 per unit. The council should use Measure E funds cost-effectively to acquire and renovate rent-controlled housing and make it available for our low-income residents far into the future. Also, don't allow our immigrant brothers and sisters to be terrorized by Trump and ICE, the least we can do.
Thank you. Next speaker.
First of all, thank you, Mayor, for all the efforts to make our city a better place. I'm here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget and his push for greater accountability. I'm here today because, yes, I believe you pay should be tied to progress. We want to see progress on homelessness, crime, and until we do, no, you shouldn't be getting more tax dollars. I also strongly believe everyone needs to follow the law. Homeless or not, housed or not, during the summer months, our fire department answers calls for more encampments every single day. Last week, fire trucks came to our neighborhood to extinguish fire originated in homeless encampment just a few yards away from our homes, two times in just one week. A month back, somebody broke-
Thank you. We have Forrest Nixon, please come down. Alyssa Kroger, Lee Osama, and Jasmine Vital.
Well, I'm a D-Three homeowner and member of SURGE. I'm here to oppose the mayor's plan to arrest our unhoused neighbors. As an attorney, I've seen the devastation that a criminal record causes. If you're an immigrant, a misdemeanor can get you detained and deported. And if you're a citizen, it closes doors to jobs and help. Council members, don't believe the rhetoric. There's no such thing as, quote, "brief targeted interactions with the criminal system" as the mayor claims. Arresting unhoused neighbors is not compassionate. Radical care and support are. Keep your eye on the ball. The problem isn't unaccountable unhoused neighbors. True accountability is this council following the people's mandate of Measure E to create affordable housing. Note a responsibility of shelter. Stop the sweeps. Fund Trust 24/7. And allocate 1.5 million to Rapid Response and Immigrant Legal Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Allegra, and I live in District Nine, and I'm a part of SURGE, also known as Showing Up for Racial Justice. I'm here to urge City Council members to listen to the vulnerable unhoused and immigrant communities affected by your budget and actions. I urge you to fund 1.5 billion for legal aid to immigrants, for immigrants, and protect Measure E funds for permanent affordable housing and homeless prevention. The root cause of homelessness is the lack of affordable housing in the center of a greedy military tech-industrial complex that is Silicon Valley. I also urge you to continue funding the San Jose-specific Trust Team and expand its full coverage from 40 hours a week to 24/7 to provide meaningful non-police mental health and substance abuse crisis response. Stop paying, or stop wasting taxpayer money by conducting inhumane violent sweeps on our unhoused community and reject the responsibility to shelter policy and increase police funding. Arresting and sweeping the unhoused is a racial justice issue. Unhoused people will-
Next speaker.
My name is Kelly McCully. I'm a resident of Santa Clara County, San Jose, and I've also been homeless. I come here to say, we all know that some of you are racist on the board. We all know that some of you are elitist. We also know that some of you are classist. But we elected you to protect your constituents, not your corporate donors, not your friends, not yourselves, to protect all of your constituents. We need you to provide support and love, not hate and incarceration, to all of our residents, unhoused, immigrants, everyone. You need to stand up for all of your constituents' rights, and you need to abide by the oath that you took when you were sworn in. I took that oath in 2002 when I began at the County of Santa Clara, and even though I don't work there any longer, I still abide by that oath I took so many years ago, and I advise you to please do the same. Thank you.
Before you start, I'd like to call Ginger Cardona, Joyce, and Brody. Come on down.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Jasmine Vital. I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation and a resident of District Three. I'm here to demand the city of San Jose allocate 1.5 million dollars of the city's budget to support the defense of our immigrant community, to fund legal and protection services. Now more than ever, it is necessary to stand in solidarity with our immigration family, neighbors, and coworkers. The crisis in Los Angeles that is going on as we sit here tonight should be a warning to us all of what can happen when the city is not prepared to respond to federal and ICE attacks. As City Council members voted in by your community, this community, it is your responsibility to listen to the people's demands, to protect the people, and at least you can give us, you could do this by providing us the funds to protect ourselves. Lastly, I reject the response to shelter proposal and urge you to use Measure E funds to fund affordable housing, not to further criminalize the unhoused. Listen to the volunteers, organizations, and nonprofits who are actually doing the work here.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm a resident of District One. The City Council should be ashamed, and the community needs to hold the line, hold the line on the ICE raids, on the criminalization of the unhoused, our unhoused neighbors, and on the half a billion dollars proposed to an incompetent and brutal police department that cooperates fully with the agencies that are destroying people's homes and separating families. There is a cop in this room, right back there, right now, that beat a young black man in my neighborhood for chilling in his car outside of his home. Officer Osborne is standing back there on the left. This budget proposal is criminal. There are no solutions to the real pains in this city. The solutions offered only serve corporations, tech, tourism, with no regard for struggling people, for working families, for the poor, for the unhoused. There is no human dignity in this budget. We need creative budgetary solutions, and this budget replicates problematic narratives about our community. If you are feeling unsafe because people are suffering in the street, know that this budget is relying on your fear to criminalize working and struggling people. To be clear-
Thank you. That's your time. Nicholas Saba. Nicholas Saba, Mu, I think it says Idso, Andrew, no, Anzu Schaefer, and Batman. Come on down. Go ahead.
Good evening. Alyssa, resident of D-One. I'm here to speak in favor of the originally intended use backed by voters of Measure E for permanently supportive housing, legal aid, and shelter operations. These are solutions that we know work, not criminalizing homelessness. And yes, Mayor Mahan, it is criminalizing homelessness. I've seen you shake your head at everyone who has said so, and I would very much appreciate the interpretation of the city attorney in where the city stands on the unconstitutionality of your responsibility to shelter. Your misrepresentation of the situation is self-serving. It's extremely embarrassing and harmful to everyone. You like to speak on accountability, and many of your supporters are here speaking on accountability. However, it's clear they haven't done their homework. They are deeply unfamiliar with the broad depth of homelessness in our community, and I recommend that everyone read "There Is No Place For Us" by Brian-
My name is Brody. I want to state that 70% of unhoused people are employed, meaning that when you decide to criminalize these people, you are reducing their ability to maintain employment and seek employment in the future. The wait times for the shelter hotline are a minimum of three months during the warm months. That doesn't include the cold months. These wait times are much longer. You tout a 30% success rate for your rapid rehousing programs, which is pathetic, and these policies are regressive and do not support empirical data that support the fact that these are not conducive to people's housing. These are Trump-level policies, seeking and prosecuting people for just merely living. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Nicholas. You, in your budget, you put 500 million, a third of these people's taxes, towards police, which do nothing but brutalize the people of this city. They go in the streets, they whack people, they sweep their tents, they take their belongings, and you call that a- belongings, and you call that a solution? This is unacceptable. Meanwhile, people are asking for peanuts in comparison. They're asking for 1.5 million for protecting the people, which is what the police should be doing but do not do. Do they look hungry? Do they deserve any money? They deserve nothing. And honestly, all of you don't either. Kameh, I, I actually met you outside of this hall once and in December of 2023, and I said, 10,000 Palestinians are dead because we fund these...
Sir, please, please direct your comments to the hall, the council's hall.
This is our budget. You're, uh, you're allocating part of your budget to military industrial...
That's your time. Next speaker.
I was at the recent encampment sweeps along the Guadalupe River Trail. I was out there the whole week, every day, from about seven-ish to whenever they finished up around later in the afternoon. I talked to hundreds of people along that trail, hundreds. Nobody was offered a phone number, an email, an address, nothing. Hundreds of people who were supposedly providing housing to have not been provided housing. There is no answer for these people. And you cannot tell me that that's a lie because I was there and I interviewed every single one of them. This is outrageous that we are deciding to use a understructured, mindless plan that doesn't have any sort of structure behind it to unilaterally criminalize people.
That's your time. Next speaker. Albert Venegas, Sammy, Lisa, Huen Long Tien, Yuritzi Torres Mendoza, Kimberly Wu, and Hui Tran, come on down. Go ahead.
My name is Andrew Siegler. I'm with SURGE Santa Clara County and a resident and voter at District Three. If you vote for the mayor's plan to gut Measure E, to arrest homeless people, to not fund trust 24/7, to fund more cops but not give 1.5 million dollars to legal services for immigrants, you're a coward. Yesterday, the mayor put out in his newsletter saying that he's fighting a war on two fronts, but interestingly, neither of those fronts were against ICE kidnapping San Jose residents right here in the city limits. That speaks volumes. And you will speak volumes too with your vote tomorrow. Personally, I think this council has a majority made up of cowards. As much as I love being proven right, though, I hope you prove me wrong. Fund affordable housing, fund homelessness prevention, stop spending money on sweeps, don't criminalize homelessness, fund trust 24/7 through the full year, fund the RRN for protection for our immigrant neighbors. Just let people be people. Don't, don't fund the, the Trump...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
My name is Yuritzi and I'm from District Six, and I'm here with Siren. A truly beautiful San Jose is a unified ones, a unified one against hate of all kind. Today, housing, labor, and immigration advocates stand together in defiance of the mayor's effort to pit us against each other. We demand 1.5 million for immigration resources. ICE attacks are brutal, unjust, and unrelenting. We need to be ready to protect our immigrant neighbors now more than ever. Second demand is reject the responsibility to house proposal. This proposal is truly nonsensical and doesn't address any of the real issues that the constituents face. It only forces unhoused folks to face even more trauma and uncertainty. This proposal stinks of true hatred for those experiencing poverty. Support, or demand number three, support vital community resources, namely MACSA and trust, as well as respecting the original purpose of Measure E. In LA, we are seeing a clear demonstration of what happens when those in power twist the definition of compassion and safety. Will you continue to...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. I'll go straight to the point. I do want to recognize that the council has invested more funds into immigrant defense, uh, going from 50,000 to 500,000. However, after what we've seen in LA, I hope it is very clear that is not enough. We are not facing against just ICE. We are facing the federalization of law enforcement all across the state that is going to harm our communities. But as we're talking on safety as well, I want to make it very clear, responsibility to shelter does nothing for public safety. We are trying to punish people for refusing shelter when we don't have enough beds. What are we investing in if we cannot meet demand? We are putting 2 million dollars to punish people for things the city cannot provide. Take that money and put it in immigration services. Take that money and put it in trust. Don't, don't not reallocate Measure E funds permanently, uh, because again, repeated message, that is a broken promise and a waste of resources. Uh, lastly, we do have the statement signed by dozens of...
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm a South City District Seven citizen who has been troubled by homelessness and stand in support of the mayor's project's proposal, which enhances the code of conduct and action in homelessness. We must balance compassion with responsibility. Sheltering offers service and support, but when those services are refused, we must have a system in place to encourage the participation. Having efficient shelters is only the first step. Those who receive support also have a duty to keep our city clean, to take steps towards self-sufficiency, to attend job training and placement, then afford a roof over their heads. It's never our wish to criminalize homeless, but to shelter them and help them get back on their feet. While E funds and affordable housing may help in long term, but we need immediate action to shelter them first. I can't tolerate the trash and the chaos they keep piling up on my house constantly. Therefore, I urge the city council to approve this June's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Let me know when. Okay. My name is Lisa, and as of last Thursday, I am a former animal care attendant at the San Jose Animal Care Center. I'm not here to sugarcoat anything. I'm shocked, disappointed, and pissed off. What's happening at the facility is just wrong and unacceptable. The program manager Lori, the shelter's operation ma- manager Mallory Kinsman, and everyone at the top, they've failed. They're disorganized, their training is a joke, and they clearly have no real skills when it comes to caring for these animals. I've seen it myself. Dogs and cats mistreated, neglected for long periods of time in filthy, unhealthy, and life-threatening conditions. The answer is not to throw more money at it. Money won't fix incompetence. The solution is simple. Replace all management. They need to go. These animals deserve better, and I cannot sit quietly while this carelessness and neglect continues. Thank you.
Before you start, I'd like to call Lawrence Day, Jaclyn Faraius, Alberto Camacho, I think it says Marshall, but it could say Mrs. Hall, and Samantha Torres.
Good evening. Uh, I'm a college student speaking against the responsibility to shelter proposal and the over 2 million neighborhood quality of life police unit. I also speak in support of the 1.5 million dollars in immigration services. I am studying computer science because I believe technology can be used for and with the community, not as a means for mass surveillance and incarceration. We need long-term affordable housing. We do not need to criminalize members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Um, I'd also like to call Dr. Jonathan Gomez, Oscar Q, and Nora Carino, but I think I already called her. Go ahead.
My name is Lawrence, so I just want to let you know that unemployment is at an all-time high. Drugstores are closing now, retail stores are shutting down as well, and unemployment, we're doing nothing about it. When we should be solving problems, we keep wasting time on stupid fights, blaming, when we should be working together to get your job done. I do not support 1.5 million for more law enforcement, maintain Measure E in affordable housing units, and we also need to understand, mental health and immigration resources are very important to our community. We need to be taking care of each other, not pointing fingers and playing blame games. Enough is enough. We also need to address the fact that consumer protection scams are on the rise. People are falling through unemployment because we're not doing anything to address it. We need to address the situation now more than ever, and that's why I'm working right now, 1.5 million to invest in resources that people need when we should not be abandoning them. That's what we're doing, and we need to stop that and focus on solutions now.
Speaker. Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Alberto Camacho. I'm a D five resident, an Eastside teacher, Eastside alumni. I'm speaking with Somos Mayfair, Cisapuela Collective, and the Youth Building Peace Coalition. Uh, we strongly, we strongly support the MBA number seventeen on youth development, uh, for funding for MACSA. As an Eastsider, MACSA was a hub for me and many Chicanics and Latinx youth growing up. Uh, and as an educator now, I see firsthand how Raza is in heavy need of a place for recreation, safety, and a sanctuary for the cultivation of culture, just like MACSA once was for me. Uh, I also hope that you guys support our people, mi gente, the families I serve, my parents, um, with that 1.5 million dollar allocation from the rapid violence that the dictator in power is promising to bring forth, as we see in LA. Fund MACSA, fund our Raza y los migrantes, fund trust, and protect our people and don't penalize them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
First of all, I want to tell you that, uh, that, uh, crimina- criminally, criminalizing the, the victim is not the way to go for homeless people. They're the victims. What you ought to be doing is providing all the benefits that the human beings need, medical, uh, housing, everything that they need so that they can have a decent housing, not just criminalize them and give money to the cops, okay? Because all they've been doing is brutalizing us, and that has to stop. The other thing is that you should follow the, the direction of the governor of California who's taken a stand against this fascist, uh, president that criminalizes the whole world. He's losing out on everything. He's losing out on the...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. Thank you.
Okay, we're on, we're on to our next speaker.
I'd like to call Aurelia Jarrett, Shereen Jarrett, Deborah Torrens. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Samantha, a patient organizer of La Fina contra Cancer, and a real member, and a member of the Real Coalition. We support the Campos Salas Duane Memo. Measure E funds must prioritize family homelessness prevention because our patients can heal while losing housing. We also back council members Campos Memo to pause adopting a new code of conduct and delay changes to sensitive ordinances until there's a clear plan. Please invest $80,000 to design a community-led interpersonal violence prevention program as promised in the reimagining public safety work. Please fund 1.5 million for immigration legal services. ICE activity is rising in California, and San Jose's immigrant communities need protection now. Restore full funding to the older adult health and wellness program. Oppose racial equity staff cuts and support the mayor's 500,000 investment in MACSA. This budget should reflect care, safety, and racial equity for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Gomez, and I'm a professor of Chicano-Chicano Studies, uh, SJSU, and a member of the Youth Building Peace Coalition, and a friend of the SJ Public Library who develops poetry programs for youth at different branches across the city. I strongly support the manager's budget addendum focused on youth development, especially MBA number seventeen for MACSA funding. While youths on the East Side have many assets and much promise, they encounter deep and enduring structural inequalities which put them at great risk of homelessness and being caught up in the criminal legal system. Investing and believing in programs like MACSA and SJ Public Library, uh, and the San Jose Public Library provides youths with places to go where they may be connected to programs, to services, and caring people. And I ask the city to fully fund these proposals and to demonstrate through committed action that San Jose youth matter and are deserving of life-enhancing opportunities. Thank you.
A child that knows their worth to the well-being of our city will break generational chains. When parents have tools and support they need, can, parents can be present for their families. It's essential that we stand with MACSA. We strongly support the MBA focused on youth development, number seventeen, fifteen, seven, five, and eight for MACSA. Silicon Valley Pain Index shows that interim housing is failing. More people are becoming houseless than are being housed. We must protect Measure E from permanent, for permanent supportive housing and fully fund trust 24/7. There has been two ICE raids in my neighborhood. Supporting, separating families isn't about safety, it's about money and chaos. I called you District Ten, you didn't call me back. We need to invest our immigration defense, uh, to defend the people whose, whose labor supports our lives. My name is Oscar Quiros Madrano. I am with Somos Mayfair and the Cisapuela Collective. What happens next depends on you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for listening. Really appreciate you and the work you do, and please, we appreciate what you do too. I greatly appreciate safety and the messes that you clean up for us, so thank you. And I grew up here in San Jose, and I continue to serve my city because I love it. And I just was out a few weeks ago painting murals to beautify the city because our mayor believes in having a beautiful city, and I know many of you were there helping, and thank you for doing that. Um, like you and the neighbors here, we want people to have a humane place to live and have dignity. And I'm sure many of us feel guilty when we drive around and we see the unhoused and we think, well, I'm housed, I have food to eat. And so I'm committed with standing with the mayor and the plan, and I would hope that you would all join him too, and let's pass this budget. Um, I'm a third grade teacher, and I teach my kids every day. Tomorrow's the last day of school, and I'm going to be really tired walking in there, but every day I teach my kids, there are consequences.
Thank you. Next speaker. Dominic Tran, come on down. Jonathan Coran, Dean Daly, Karina Andrade, and Christopher.
I'm going to first read for someone who isn't here, who you called. So the first person I'm reading for is Aurelia, and she's saying, she wanted everyone to know she's a really young, uh, college girl, not me. I'm Aurelia. I'm with LEAC from District One. This proposed plan doesn't create a long-term solution or focus on homelessness prevention. My whole family was hit with a no-fault eviction during COVID, and I'm now an unhoused youth on a temporary housing plan that is about to end, and will need to be homeless for a set amount of time to qualify for another assistance program. I have two jobs right now, which will not be able to keep while I'm unhoused for an extended period of time. The average price for low-income housing is over 2,000 in this area, almost require three times the rent, nearly impossible for those working at entry-level positions. I'm a sober, functional member of society, being shuffled around by these programs with no plan will leave me on the streets and labeled as a criminal. She's very concerned.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're only allowed to speak once. I know, I'm, I'm sorry. Tony, we gotta go to the next.
No, next speaker.
No, it's not fair to everyone else. You get to, you get, everybody gets 60 seconds.
I had people ask me if they could do this earlier in the meeting, and I said, no, you, you...
Please don't even tell me no before I said, I said I'm speaking for someone.
Because people, other people came and spoke for other people. I mean, that's not an uncommon thing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. We gotta, we have to move on. I'm sorry. We're going to go to the next speaker. We give every person 60 seconds. I'm sorry. It's not fair to everyone else. Okay, we're going to go to, excuse me, guys. It's one person at a time speaking, it should be the next public speaker.
Hi, hello, everybody. My name is Dominic Tran. I just want to start off with a quote from King of the Hill. It goes, "People over pennies." And a lot of the solutions I've heard, whether good or bad, they involve a lot of pennies, but not a lot of people. I want to say that there is a three-word solution that maybe we all can use in the audience and in the council, and it's "I love you." A lot of people on the street don't hear those three words enough, and they're running away from houses that don't have that. I hope that when we consider building these houses, we consider how do we make them into homes where love can be cultivated, and that perhaps they can form the esteem needed to labor and to learn and to be part of our world together. That's all that I ask for, and I thank you for your time.
Just, when you start, we start the timer.
The most common reason people are supporting this is because of safety. They state it makes their streets safer. So did apartheid for white South Africans. So did slavery for white people. So does fear-mongering against immigrants. But you're opposed to that, and yet, in that moment, people stated it made them safer. It got them jobs. And yet, here we are, attacking homeless people, scapegoating homeless people, weaponizing homeless people, and for what? We are folding up our community. When I asked Matt Mahan, and I told him about homeless people being demonized, he stated to me that, hey, my policy is attacked by the media. This is not an attack on you, Matt. This is me telling you, please, I'm begging you, recognize homeless people are people. They deserve respect, they deserve safety.
Thank you. That's your time. Monica Lopez, Winona, Winona Denise Morris, David Noel, and Gerhard, come on down. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Dean Daly, resident of District 2. I say that I was most moved by my representative councilwoman Campos, when she mentioned that families literally were living in creek beds, and women with children, and that breaks my heart. It certainly stimulated me coming over here to have my minute. And I commend the mayor for his very heartfelt, very comprehensive, maybe not perfect, but attempt to address the problem. And I agree, one thing that he said, he said that people, you know, cannot, you know, have the right to live on a creek bed, especially if they have mental illness or drug problems. So I think we should move forward and see what happens. Any program can be adjusted, but I think this is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Corran. I live in the Alomarque neighborhood in District 5. I believe the city should adopt the proposal for the 1.5 million dollars for immigration services. This recognizes the immediate emergency and strengthens and protects our community. I also urge the city to reject the mayor's plan to divert Measure E housing funds to the police. Everyone agrees that homelessness is a serious problem, but diverting money from housing to police is not a solution. Jail is not a housing or a medical solution. The fabled help does not exist in any meaningful way. Think, who in this chamber wouldn't choose to spend a night in a jail cell? Not one of us. Yet, we pretend it's good enough for the least of us. And how does the mayor plan to implement this proposal? Trump-style mass arrests? The police are not social workers. They are not trained for this, and all too often, they make ten situations worse by escalating them until violence is used. The mayor is not just proposing a failed policy, but a lazy, naive, and cynical proposal to say that he did...
That's your time. Next speaker. Julie Neader, Kathleen Madeline, and Delma, come on down. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Monica Duran. I am the daughter of immigrants, and I'm also a behavioral therapist for children with autism. And to tell you the truth, I didn't really even plan on speaking today. It was kind of just like my last session. Thank you, my last session canceled, so I was able to be here. But I do have one thing to say. If I, at 23 years of age, don't know what I'd do if my parents were taken from me, then what are all of the children that have challenges with social communication and interaction going to do if their parents get taken from them? I want all of you to understand the importance of keeping our families together. We need to provide the families of San Jose with 1.5 million for proper legal services in order to keep them safe. I urge you to protect the immigrants without voices so they can protect their children without voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I'm Dave Noel, longtime San Jose resident, neighborhood leader, and president of the Erickson Neighborhood Association in District 9. I urge you to support the mayor's budget priorities and the city manager's recommendations to achieve them. It's exciting to see the city of San Jose leading the way on addressing unsheltered homelessness. It's finally time to grab the brass ring. I urge you to ensure funding is allocated to operate the new facilities being built now and start turning lives around. To this end, I urge you to approve the proposed Measure E funding reallocation, preferably for at least two years. Ongoing polling shows that residents and business owners consistently agree on Mayor Mahan's overarching budget priorities. I'm here to speak on behalf of the majority of voters and residents who couldn't be here tonight but are anxious to see these priorities addressed. Mayor Mahan's pragmatic recommendations will feed a virtuous cycle that will help us afford things tomorrow that we can't afford today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, council. I know it's late, but please, I would appreciate the attention that you've given to others at the beginning of the thing and not on your phones. As a volunteer, I've previously visited this chamber to express my lack of confidence in the San Jose Animal Care Shelter. While I appreciate the additional funds being allocated to the shelter, I have no faith they will be used for their intended purposes. They are not aiding the community. Last year, the shelter audit found that a situation of overcrowding, the shelter solution was to refuse new intakes unless the animal was sick or injured, and instead put pressure fully on community members doing the right thing. Currently, if a community member finds a dog, due to short-sighted policy, the only options are to release the dog where it was found or to take 100% responsibility of the dog. Currently, if you have the dog for 30 days, you permanently own that dog. There is no support from the shelter, and there is an expectation that you take the dog to a vet after...
Thank you. Next speaker. Hyun-Win, come on down. Jesse Haro, Danya Rejon, and Sanita. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Trowbridge. I am a homeowner in District 3, a county employee, and a member of Serge at Santa Clara County. I also work in Civic Center area, and when I suspected a stranger in the area was suicidal, I contacted 988. The operator dismissed my concerns and told me to call the police if I was that worried. Again and again, studies, advocate groups, and people directly affected by these issues have told us that the police are not the solution to mental health crises or homelessness. Programs such as the Trust Team offer effective help to people who are rendered vulnerable by the criminalization of homelessness, mental health issues, and disability. I support expanding our trust teams from 40 hours per week to 24/7. I also support the Salas Campos and Doan Measure E Memo to fulfill the promise to San Jose's voters and to provide long-term, deeply affordable housing. I oppose Mayor Mahan's so-called responsibility to shelter, which would really leave resident...
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, come on down. Also, Tatiana, Irene, Zeniga, Melissa Marquez, and Gabriel Marquez.
Hello, mayor and the council. My name is Danya. I'm from District D2. I'm here to fully support the mayor's proposal for responsibility to shelter, pay for performance. Quickly stating responsibility to shelter, the people opposing either belong to just one of these categories, they might be benefiting from perpetuating this homelessness issue, or they might not be directly impacted by the consequences of homelessness right across their home, or they might be unaware of what is happening. And for pay for performance, it's pretty common sense. It's like being hired for a job. You have been elected to do this job, to serve the constituents that have elected you, to the tax, you have an accountability to the taxpayers. So I fully support that there should be a component that is tied to your performance, how the city is run, how we feel as taxpayers.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call a few more names since the other people didn't come down. I have Kristonia, Dave Luhon, Fu Yun, Steve Byer, Jay Govinden, Sri, Carlos Amaya, Christina Thoth. Go ahead and speak, and I'll call more names since nobody is making any moves. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Delma Hernandez. I'm a proud Eastside resident and member of the South Bay Community Land Trust. Tonight, I urge you to reject the responsibility to shelter policy, fully fund trust 24/7, protect Measure E, invest 1.5 million in immigrant defense. At a recent event we co-hosted, community members reflected on what a home means to them, and they said a home is affordable. It's tranquility, it's protection, it's unity, a place to grow, to feel loved and to be and to belong. This budget does not reflect that vision nor the needs of your constituents. San Jose needs a permanent revenue source that supports a balanced approach and prioritizes long-term affordable housing. Thanks to your leadership and a $5 million Measure E investment, we move forward towards acquiring an 18-unit building on Virginia Avenue, now permanently affordable for working-class multigerial families. However, this proposed budget puts staggering progress at risk and threatens the stability of our most vulnerable communities. Stable housing builds stable communities. Let's protect the cultural...
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call Veronica, Ryan, Faisal Yazdani, Asif Rao, and Khaled, last name starts with N. Go ahead.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm a resident of District 10, a volunteer in District 7 with the M C B A. I'm here today to speak in support of the mayor's June budget message and his push for greater accountability. I'm here because I believe accountability matters, and it starts with the city and its leaders. Everyone needs to follow the law, housed and unhoused. Our fire and police departments answer calls from campaigns every day. City services are dealing with rampant blight, vandalism, and theft, all of which is costing taxpayers, residents, and business owners millions. It's crucial for San Jose to establish clear accountability and consistent enforcement regarding these issues. Laws should apply equally to all residents without exception. A thriving city requires order and safety for everyone. I support responsibility to shelter. We need to build cost-effective shelter. When people are choosing to stay outside and refuse services, they are impacting others' qualities of life and costing taxpayers millions. We need to get them into the care of the county. I volunteer D7, doing my part to help make the city and local communities better. We need the city to do theirs. That's why I support the...
Thank you. Next speaker. Christian Johnson, come on down. Brian, go ahead to Mike, Brian Doe and Mike M. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council members. My name is Vice Elizetti. I'm the resident of District 8. Candelaus, is he here? He's my favorite council member because I live in his district. Let's take a moment to remember the chaos that is going on down in L.A. Let's say a prayer for them, and also imagine the chaos, which is maybe thousand times worse, happening thousands of miles away in Gaza. So if you, I urge to your human, I appeal to your humanity to say a prayer for them as well. I know I'm not here to speak about that today. Today, I'm here to speak about the budget, and I'm here to say a few words in support of mayor's budget. In my opinion, the budget addresses the five key issues, three or four, at least the key issues that it addresses, or, you know, taking care of the neighborhood, cleaning the neighborhood, safety of our children in schools and whatnot, and paying for the future jobs, technical jobs that are high-paying in the future, as well as spending money responsibly.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city council. If everybody knows the amount of hours you guys spend, I think that would be a little bit nicer when they're addressing you, but I think I understand because I've followed. I think the budget has some very good points, very strong, just need to be followed through. Housing the homeless is the greatest of ideas. Many business owners have suffered, but they're not all bad, of course, so we want to use compassion along. We need the police to also exercise some power nicely to make sure that they do not go back to the bad ways. A lot of them are on drugs and other things. We need to make sure they're off of that, that they're housed well, mentally served, and then hopefully taught to find jobs so they can be a good part of the community. We need to be a good community looking after our people. We need to make sure all...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Mahan, council members, and respected audience. My name is Asif Rao. I'm here to support mayor's budget message. I'm bringing two issues to mayor's office attention. We don't have clean water in East San Jose. If you can work on improving water quality, we'll appreciate it. Secondly, I have two college-going kids who have low vision and cannot drive. Mobility is a challenge for them, but there is a hope. I want to work with City of San Jose to bring Vemo or other autonomous car companies and start trials specifically available to young students so their potential is not held back due to mobility challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carlos Amaya, and I'm a resident of San Jose. The mayor's budget reminds me of the Mexican film Un Mundo Maravilloso, where a homeless man named Juan Perez is jailed along with other homeless people so the government can pretend poverty doesn't exist. This agenda criminalizes homelessness instead of trying to solve it. Some claim this will help homeless people have better access to mental health care, but as we say in Spanish, del plato a la boca, a veces se cae la sopa. In theory, it might sound like a good idea, but the truth is that in practice, incarceration does not deliver care, just more trauma. Furthermore, this budget disrespects the will of the people. Voters passed Measure E expecting those funds to be mostly allocated for affordable housing. Instead, a technicality is being exploited to divert funds for emergency shelters, a move that undercuts trust and impact. Compassion should not come at the expense of our city's vulnerable residents. I'm reminded of my old high school's motto, "Men and women for and with others." This budget is far from that.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hassan Ru, come on down. Paul Pham and Lori Stewart. Go ahead.
What up, Doe? Make sure you look at me when I'm talking to you, okay? Now, in 2020, your response as a council, as a city, was to respond to the plight of black people and of black and brown folks here who have been affected by police brutality with extreme violence, so much extreme violence that you became an international news story, and you didn't like it very much those first two, three weeks. Black people make up 3% of San Jose's community, okay? About 70% is Asian and Latino, all right? And right now, the migrant communities are being heavily affected by the way that you guys are deciding to respond to the way that the fascists running our country is responding, okay? And so what you need to understand is that the response that you saw in 2020 that you didn't like is going to be tenfold worse if you don't get on the right side of history this time around. You're not going to like the way that people respond, you're not going to like it one bit. If you didn't like the way the 3% responded...
Thank you. That's your time.
Honorable mayors and council, my name is Brian Doe. I'm a resident of District 7, Councilman... I'm a resident of District 7, currently serving as board presence at a local school district. Since my first year on the board, I have spoken against a pay raise for us on the board until significant and meaningful progress is made for our students in our districts. For the last five years, there had been no raise for any member of my board. The mayor proposal of pay for performance has stepped in the right directions for greater accountability. Like many members of my Asian-American community, I support accountability and transparency. We are asking all of you to support the mayor budget message in full.
Hello, my name is Hassan Rau. Why are we treating homeless people facing extraordinary challenges with extraordinary force instead of extraordinary compassion? Why does the number of homeless people in shelters increase, but the number of total homeless people stays largely the same? And why are we only taking half measures instead of committing to meeting people where they are and addressing the roots of problems? But hey, out of sight, out of mind, right? Thank you.
Before you speak, I'd like to call Christopher Andrade, last name's Padilla, I can't read the handwriting on the first name, and Christina, last name starts with B. I think it's Bowie, but Christina, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Lori Stewart. I'm a resident of District 3. I wrote to council member Mulcahy's office a few weeks back when there was a quick sweep of the unhoused on Autumn Street to find out what the plan was to get them into shelter. Thank your people for responding. I was told that during the abatement, but not before, they passed out resources and connected, connected two people to available shelter beds in San Jose, processed 15 requests for accommodations, I'm not sure what that means. Zero people they interacted with refused housing. Tents are already back. I have not heard what the plan is yet for Columbus Park. I hope we do better. We already have laws on the books to deal with violent people. You don't need a special set of laws for the unhoused. It pushes them further to the edges where they're already standing, ready to fall off. My ask: Put aside your absurd and cruel responsibility to shelter policy, rally your colleagues and constituents and billionaire businesses to rise to the occasion, because the responsibility to shelter the homeless should be on all of us who are housed, and I'm talking to the people still in the audience. Focus on those that are begging to...
Thank you, that's your time. Next speaker.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Pham, and my family owns a small business on Story Road. Thank you for your generous support of the local business corridor through the recent District 7 funding allocation. Investments like these only bring together shared cultural moments, but also drive foot traffic and reinforce the vibrancy of the commercial district. In addition to being a small business owner, I'm also a homeowner. Therefore, I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor for understanding that it's not okay for someone to urinate on the front door of your home, that it's also not okay for someone to urinate on the front door of a small business. It's not acceptable for someone to break the patio furniture at your home, spend the night, and start a fire on your front porch, nor walk into your kitchen with your family at home, because that's exactly what happened to our family at our place of business. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for understanding that even small business owners need to put food on the table, and your responsibility to shelter initiative is a tremendous help to all small businesses in dealing with a very expensive and scary issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers, Samantha, Brenda Bell, Sam G., Kathy Cordova, Debra, and Sean.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Jonathan Padilla, the D8 resident. It gets exciting here at the end, apparently. I want to say I support the 5X increase in the mayor's June budget for immigrant communities. If the council members who've asked for more dollars, they, they should act like just proposed trade-offs, though. But we have to acknowledge this fact, that the same council members asking for that extra money have recently been caught using reprehensible language, including the N-word, and disparaging the communities they claim to support. The reality is that we desperately need accountability. Those on the dais who claim to stand for social justice but venerate and idolize corruption and graft of boss tweet in Tammany Hall, they should be ashamed. That's not my San Jose. We need real leadership, dynamic and responsive government, and new ideas, and that's why I fully support Mayor Mahan's budget proposal.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Cordova, District 6 resident and employee of Latinas Contra Cancer in District 3. Tonight, I am representing the Real Coalition as well as the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. In nearly four decades of working closely with marginalized community members, including immigrant, unhoused, and addicted individuals, I have seen firsthand the terror and disruption caused by attacks on immigrants. I have broken bread with hundreds of unhoused friends and learned their stories. I have held traumatized individuals in the midst of mental health crises. Because of these experiences, I ask for a city budget with Measure E going to its intended purpose of affordable, permanent housing, more funding for the trust program to expand to 24/7, and an additional 1.5 million for immigrant legal services. Programs like Rapid Response Network, which protects immigrant community members against ICE activity through legal assistance and observation. We must expand...
Thank you, next speaker.
Council members, people are being kidnapped off the streets and due process is being denied. ICE agents have gone absolutely rabid, and sanctuary cities are betraying their citizens. We not only need the $1.5 million funding to support immigration legal services, but also a city that does not use their police to arrest and displace their citizens. Mahan's budget plan for arresting the unhoused is nothing but ICE training. We cannot trust San Jose as a sanctuary city with policies like this. I'd like to ask everyone if seeing unhoused members living outside of your warm homes makes you scared, or if seeing them makes you uncomfortable, because the truth is uncomfortable. The unhoused are traumatized victims of a system prioritizing property value and profit over humanity. We have Measure E funds for affordable housing, but instead, it's going to police with more loyalty to property than people. Crime is most present in communities with great wealth inequality, and to be in one of the richest counties in the nation...
That's your time, next speaker. That's your time. Next speaker.
Permanent affordable housing is your responsibility.
My name is Brenda Bell Brown, and I am a media professional sharing this with you on behalf of San Jose Spotlight. I ask that you read their op-ed titled "Don't Arrest Us: Listen To Us First Before Your Meeting Tomorrow." Now, this was written by three people who were homeless in San Jose, and the message is clear. They didn't turn down shelter because they needed to be heard, needed to be made accountable. The options available did not work for them, and arrest and punishment was not going to change that. Again, before you make your deliberation and vote tomorrow, I ask that you read the San Jose Spotlight op-ed titled "Don't Arrest Us: Listen To Us First." Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Donna Wallach, and I live in District 1. I strongly support the proposal by Amigos de Guadalupe for 1.5 million dollars for legal services for our immigrant communities. San Jose cannot function without our immigrant communities. Shame on the city for the destruction of homeless encampments forcing houseless people out of the housing they have built for themselves, and destroying their possessions is beyond disgusting, especially when there is no affordable housing for them to move into. Shelters are not safe and are not the answer. Affordable housing is the answer. Allocate funds to Measure E, allocate funds to the trust program 24/7. Cops are not the answer. Reject the 1.2 million dollars for cops. Reject the responsibility to shelter. Criminalizing the unhoused is wrong. Do fund one...
Thank you. We've called all the names. If you submitted a card and did not speak, please make your way down. We've called all the names.
I'm Jane Kawasaki. I'm president of the board of the Yui Kai Japantown Community Senior Center, and I'm here tonight to request continuation of funding for the older adult health and wellness program. Yui Kai and nine other nonprofits provide a lifeline for hundreds of older adults and their families, many of whom don't speak English, are isolated, and have nowhere else to turn. These services are culturally tailored, offered in a wide range of languages, and they simply cannot be replicated. These services are not luxuries, they are essential. Without these services, many of our elders are just dollars away from homelessness or a health crisis. We all know it costs far more to get someone out of crisis than to keep them safe and supported in the first place.
Next speaker.
I have been a resident of District 10 for the last 40 years. I am here to express my strong support for Mayor Mahan's budget message, and the priorities outlined within it. Priorities that address the most pressing challenges in our city, including homelessness, pay for performance, safety, and quality of life. They are not just budgetary decisions, they are commitment to building a stronger, more accountable, and more efficient government for the residents. At the heart of these priorities is accountability. Strong organizations thrive on accountability. By focusing on meaningful performance indicators, we create a system where success is measured and rewarded, not assumed. The budget is not just a financial plan, it's a commitment to delivering tangible results for the people you serve. With clear priorities and a focus on outcomes, we can ensure that our city...
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Judy Trehan, and my husband back there, we lived in San Jose for 40 years, love it. I fully support Mayor Mahan's common sense program that will encourage our homeless to choose indoor living. A three-time offer within an 18-month span is more than reasonable, and for those who resist, will have an opportunity that some might never have had before for mental health or addiction treatment through a court order. The intent here is to improve their quality of life, as well as the quality of life for other residents of San Jose. Thus, I ask that you vote for the mayor's budget in full. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
I support their previous comments about Moxa and the animal shelter. The majority of unhoused service providers oppose right to shelter. They know it will endanger their staff and city staff. Criminalize innocent people, harm people with ICE involvement, particularly queer folks who may be killed if deported. Everyone knows the county doesn't support this unfunded mandate and doesn't have the resources. We are in a dangerous precipice. We feel certain more ICE raids are coming, along with National Guard and maybe the Marines. Voting in favor of right to shelter against black and brown people at this time in history may light a fire you cannot extinguish.
All right. Thank you all for coming out this evening and taking the time to share your personal stories and perspectives with the council. It's always helpful to hear from members of the public, and we appreciate this opportunity to listen. We will have our scheduled council meeting tomorrow and vote on the budget along with a number of other items. I hope everyone has a safe trip home, and want to just thank you all again for taking the time to be here. We are adjourned.